I will call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 17, 2019. Commissioner-
Please stand and join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Tally is absent tonight. Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Blackwell?
Here.
Vice Chair Rulin?
Here.
And Chair Crandall is absent as well.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda, Special Orders of Business for a selection of Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem. For those of you who may not be aware, the City Council is doing some administrative changes to Commissions and Committees, and we don't know for how long certain, some terms will be extended for, so staff is recommending that the various Commissions and Committees go forward and, as they would normally this year, choose their officers. So, that said, are there any proposals for-
I will-
Don?
Yeah, I'd like to propose that Commissioner Rulin become the Chair, Mr. Blackwell the Vice Chair, and maybe Mr. Crandall the Pro Tem.
Okay, and I'd like to nominate Zen.
Well, that's where, if you're looking at item B, let's hold off until we get to that one.
Okay, all right, let's do that.
Okay.
Well, I would, I would, I'd accept that.
Okay, you're seconding it?
Yes.
Okay, is any discussion? All right, then, all in favor of, Don, did you have something to say?
No.
Okay, all in favor of Jim Rulins as Chair, Michael Blackwell as Vice Chair, Mark Crandall as Chair Pro Tem, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item B, selection of Coastal Advisory Committee member. Let me take it you had a proposal?
Well, actually, no, I'm gonna withdraw that.
I'm gonna make a-
Let's send you that, let's send it.
Well, last year, Commissioner Jason Carr expressed an interest, so did I, and so I'd like to- I'd like to take a turn, like, on the, 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 Jason Carr, to, 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 I reached out to him, he said he wanted him to-
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, then, all in favor of Commissioner Tally as the representative for the Coastal Advisor Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And passes unanimously. And we have two sets of minutes.
Can I, can I ask to move the item 9B out of answer to this moment, because they are in similar nature? This is about a design review committee in a subcommittee.
9B, um, yes, why don't we, that's, I think that's, that's fine with me, too, so. Let's go ahead and jump to item 9B. In this item, it is essentially the same circumstance. We've got a, we're looking to make sure we have the people for design review, excuse me, switching over to that. And there is a proposed schedule for the rotating member, which is, just carries us through the end of the year. Again, we're not, we're unsure as to how long the terms will be extended, so we figured we'd go through the end of the year. I recommend that we select the two permanent members and then talk about the rotating member schedule, 'cause just make sure it fits into the schedule for people who are assigned.
And if we could also talk about start times, possibly moving it, checking with staff to see how, to see if that would be an option, to move it to four instead of three.
Is that, is that something that you can answer now, or do you need to do some investigation on that?
What do you mean, three plus an alternate? No, four, four P. M. Oh, oh, oh.
No, he's asking about moving the time from 3:00 P. M. to 4:00 P. M. for the DRC meeting.
Commissioner Blackwell, I don't see, from a staff standpoint, any issues with pushing it back to 4:00 P. M. However, I would like to verify that there's, you know, no other further action that needs to be done on an administrative standpoint, but in terms of, like, resources, I don't see that being a problem.
I have a recommendation on the Design Review Subcommittee. I think last year, we tried rotating a third, a third place, or with another place as an alternate member, and I always feel that it would be to the best interest of the Planning Commission and the public to have commissioners with a design background to serve on Design Review Subcommittee. In our code, they are required to have, we're required to have two members with a background and knowledge on architecture, planning, and, and landscape architect, and it's also said that it's desirable to have one with a background on historical preservation. Now, we do have three members, and we happen to have three members on, on the commission who are design professionals or are related to that, so my recommendation is that, because we, we don't really know how long this thing will going to continue, we're gonna have a new commission pretty soon, perhaps in six months, my recommendation is that we revert back to a three active member format, plus an alternate member, just for this unspecified period, because I look at the rotating schedule, there are only three or four members involved, some people are taken out of that schedule, apparently it's a draft reversion, so we either shorten that rotating period to maybe two meetings, so that everybody has a chance to participate, or I, my personal preference would, let's make it simple and just do a regular member, plus alternate this time.
So, do you have a motion to that effect? All right, well, let's have a discussion-
That, it's, it's in the code, so we don't need a motion to change the format, I think.
I can't, well, we actually don't have it before us to change the format, just to, I can't remember when we did this a year ago. Was this, this format change was approved by the Planning Commission, is that, is that what, how we did it? Okay.
That's correct.
We only have it on our agenda to approve the regular standing members tonight on the agenda.
Where is it? It's under New Business.
It's under New Business, 9B.
Is that, is that just the alternates? It's just, it's just the interim design members, not about the permanent.
No, it's what we would do normally at this time of year, which is the officers and Design Review and Coastal.
Yeah, I mean, we would appoint the regular members of the Design Review Subcommittee, it's not on the agenda the way I read it.
Commissioner Brown, just to clarify, when I, when the staff report was written for interim, it was really intended to reflect the fact that we are still waiting on direction from the City Council with regard to appointments, but-
Thank you. Right. That's your report.
Yeah, so that's why we phrased it as interim, but it is intended to just cover, you know, the, the term until we receive further direction from City Council.
So, if we, we need a motion, I, I'd like to make a motion that we change the Design Review Subcommittee format back to three active members plus one alternate member.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, two, three?
Three, three active members?
Three acting members.
With the fourth member being the alternate member.
Well, and so we have this item open for discussion now, and so before we make a motion on it, do you guys wanna get through the rest of the-
Oh, we can always discuss.
Yeah, that, I mean-
A motion can be on the table, but we can continue to discuss.
Continue talking about the members.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can talk about, so the first, so there's a, well, first there's a motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'd like to table it till we discuss it.
Yeah, well, yes, that's why we, that we would discuss it.
In all but, yeah.
So, did you have your lights on, did you have something to say about this?
I have, I'm taking off, or, but I, I don't know, I'm fairly comfortable with the rotation schedule, 'cause I, 'cause I went on it for a session, which is the first time many years, I've enjoyed the, the time being on it as a rotating member, but, you know, it's, I'm not there to do all the work like some of you guys have, have done it over the years, so it's, it's up to the rest of the group to discuss it.
You look, you look like you're about to say something.
It gives, I see your point, it does give, it does give folks a chance to, to give it a try. I do like the commitment of having folks with a design background, I think it makes a lot of sense. We're not always gonna have that, unfortunately, you know, when the stars align, we do, we happen to have that now, and then the rest of us also, everybody up here has, you know, some value to add to it, but I, I think I would lean more towards Zen's design, I think it's, it's in the code, it's really the way it should be, and it makes more sense to me that way.
My preference, I mean, we've done for many years, I've been on the Design Review, and we've done the three members, I think Bart made the recommendation about a year ago, that we start to have a rotating member in there, I think he, he had a concern, and I think rightly so, that we kinda wanted to spread the wealth and build some knowledge. I think that the people do receive experience in planning by being on the Planning Commission. People do receive some experience in design by being on the Design Review Subcommittee, and by being on the Planning Commission. People have experience in things like design in, in different ways as well, not just necessarily landscape design, for instance, but can come at it from different areas. I think, I think if we do, I think it's worked well this last year, I would actually like to continue it. As far as our overall approach, I think the proof's in the pudding, the Design Review for many years, long before I came on it, has been an effective organization, it's helped to move things through, planning, at a better pace while still making sure we have good design and we're not, and we avoid a lot of design from the dais, that sort of thing. So, I, I would want, I wouldn't wanna risk coming up with a solution that, a solution to a problem that we don't have, I think, so my preference actually would be to kinda keep things rolling like the way that we're rolling, and I like the rotating member, in my experience, it's good, so that if they're, you know, 'cause people eventually, nobody stays on the Planning Commission or Design Review forever, it helps us to assure that the people who are taking more permanent spots on Design Review have some experience when they step into it, so my preference would be to keep it, as we've been doing it for the last year.
You still prefer two regu, two, two members as a regular member and the third one as a rotating?
Yeah, that would be my preference, yeah, I think that's-
Or you could reduce the, the regular member as a one member and the other two rotating.
No, I, I think the way we've been doing it, I'm, I'm pleased with the way that it's gone.
Okay.
We did that rotation to solve a potential issue, I think it's been doing a good job at that. I think we've continued to, to make pretty good decisions in Design Review, so, you know, short of there being an issue or a problem, I'd like to keep, my preference would be to keep going the way we are.
I tend to lean the same way, that's why I started this, started this way, over the years, I've come to rely on Design Review to do a strong job of filtering things before it comes to this, and that was kinda the way it was done when I first came on the Planning Commission with the Michael Coffs and the Julias and, and Dartons and everything else that, you know, Jim and Bart went down, and we set a really huge chinning bar in this town, going to coffee for 15 years and really changing things around from a quality of design, and I've come to rely on that strong filter, and I think the staff is gonna meet those expectations, and I think it prepares the table better for the land use decision that ultimately is done when it comes to the Planning Commission. So, I think, I thought it worked well last year, and it does broaden things out, that's kinda the way I, I lean towards it, but I wanna make sure we have a strong core there, like you and Bart or somebody else along, we know that, you know, that have been, why, you've been involved, and I know Zen, you know, contributed for many years, too, so I, I wanna make sure that, but we still have that, that broadening of talent a little bit, so that, like I say, as people go off, there's people step in and pick up, pick up the mantle.
What's our success rate been with the alternates and the rotating members, in terms of attendance?
Terms of attendance, I, I attended every one, and now I've had a, a very interesting and educational time in the Design Review, and I also suggest to just keep the two permanent members and one rotating member, because it gives everyone an opportunity to experience Design Review and get that background information when you sit up here at the dais and making those decisions.
So, for that matter, are we, can we shorten the rotating period, because in your, in your draft reversion, you're having me to take the first of five meeting, then Commissioner Tally take the next of five, then after that, it's just-
Four.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can certainly-
Chris won't have a chance.
We can move it how we want, like, we, we just sort of, you know, I think Stephanie just sort of laid it over, but it's the first six months we did last time, let's, we're just copying that.
We did a copy.
But if people want to, you know, feel like, you know, November's a better time for them than August, for instance, then we can certainly play with that all at once.
Do you need more minimal yourself, if you only have three or four committees restified this time?
No, I'm more than happy to serve, I, I think if we wanna, because we don't know when the commission is going to change, right? Four of us, the term will expire conceivably, once a new council member was elected, so that gave us six months to rotate, that means we need to rotate much faster for everyone to get an opportunity.
Otherwise, yeah.
Otherwise, someone won't have a chance.
Mr. Wu, is your term up this time?
It's not, it's being extended.
You have another year.
No, I don't, I have no.
Well, just-
I'm on extension.
Okay, I, it's a long term.
So is Bart, so is Jim, so is Michael, so maybe we'll make the rotation period to two meetings.
On extension.
Let me, let me make this recommendation, just in the hope of moving us forward a little bit, we can vote for the two permanent members, and then ask staff to come back to us at our next Planning Commission meeting, and give us a schedule with, that would include all of the other Planning Commission members between now and January 22nd. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, and we can squeeze that in, and I think for the August 14th, well, do we have a Planning Commission meeting before August 14th? Yeah, we do, don't we?
We do, yeah.
So, we, so we, okay, so we don't have to worry about Design Review before then, we don't have Design Review next week, so.
There is a Design Review Subcommittee meeting next week, but we do still have a schedule in place, that'll, you know, take us through that date.
The next Planning Commission meeting's August 7th.
Okay, great, so, then we can get the permanent members, we've, we're handled for the next Design Review meeting, we can have staff come back with a schedule that includes everyone between now and January 22nd? Does that sound?
Yeah.
Yeah, for that, I, I'd like to withdraw my motion, but I will make a different motion to nominate. I always feel that Commissioner Blackwell has a very good input on landscape architecture, and a landscape architect routinely missed from Design Review, because our staff heavily rely on our consultant to do that, a lot of time we have to talk about those design issues on the Planning Commission meeting, which we're not supposed to, it should be solved during the Design Review stage, so I'd like to nominate Michael to be one of the two active members of Design Review Subcommittee.
One of the permanent members?
Yeah.
I would, I would also like to make a nomination, I'd like to nominate Zen to be one of the two, and also yourself, Jim Rulins, to be one of the two.
So, so you're saying you don't wanna be one of the permanent members of Design Review?
Well, I'm making a recommendation for these two.
I'd like to throw-
Yeah, I can, I can be an alternate.
Okay.
I'd like to throw Bart's name back out there, there's an architect of record that certainly lends some stuff to it.
Yeah, I, I agree, Bart has just done a phenomenal job on Design Review, you know, I think he's the strongest member there, you know, I would like to have his name in there. For myself, I-
It's my understanding that he was not gonna continue.
No, he's, no, his term was extended, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, he's just on vacation right now, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to continue with Design Review, but I'm also the Chair at this point, so that's, that's some extra responsibility, but, you know, if you-
I'd like to withdraw my recommendation.
Okay.
And I'd like to swap you out with Bart, and I'd like Bart to sort of allow Zen to be the Chair this time.
Jim, I believe that when you serve as a Chair of the Planning Commission, you should give the position of, well, not you give, we should elect a definite person as a Design Review Subcommittee Chair.
Well, I think, we'll leave the Chair, we can leave the Chair, selection of the Chair, to the Design Review Subcommittee.
There are only two regular members, so.
Okay.
We can do it here, too.
Yeah.
We should do it here, there are, there are only two regular members.
Then, I would recommend that Bart be the Chair, because he's got by far the most experience, he's done it before, and as we continue to rotate people through, he's gonna be a good mentor and a good shepherd to those people, and he understands, he has a very good understanding of what people need when they come into Design Review, so that would be my, my preference.
I would agree.
And then the other-
And then the other- Design Review? Um, yeah, I, I asked you to take a break last year because of potential schedule conflict, it's in the middle of the afternoon meeting, but if we can postpone, postpone it to four, yeah, I'd like to come back to Design Review Subcommittee.
Two architects on.
Should we move for, I'll move for Bart and Zen to be on, the two permanent members on the Design Review, and have one alternate member.
Well, we will all, yeah, we will all rotate that, right?
Yeah, one, one alternate member that rotates among us.
And do you propose Bart as the-
I'll second that.
Chair.
As the Chair?
I'll second that.
And you second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
We're gonna do that. Whoops. And we're sure Bart is interested in that.
Yeah, he's been interested in Design Review for all time, so I don't, I don't have any hesitation there.
Okay.
Next item on our agenda. We are back to item five, our minutes, we have two sets of minutes, the regular study session from June 19th, are there any proposed changes or motion?
Mr. Chair, I was absent, so I'll be recusing abstainia from, from both minutes.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes, the regular study session, meeting of June 19th, 2019.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a quorum to the minutes.
Ah, I thought Zen was there, I beg your pardon. So, we do not have a quorum for item 5A minutes.
We have three.
We only have three of us here, and the same is true for item 5B minutes, so we will, I will move that we continue those minutes until the next Planning Commission meeting.
We have all three out.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Moved by Rulin, seconded by Michael. Item six, oral and written communication, members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertains to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations, please limit your presentations to three minutes. Do we have any cards for something off the, off the agenda? No, very good. Next item is the consent calendar, all, I'm sorry? Oh, I beg your pardon.
If I could just have, I actually want to speak on the consent calendar, but that would be my preference, and I did submit a card for that, but I just wanna make sure it's-
We're just getting to that now, yes, so, that part of the agenda, so, and you submitted a card for 7B, okay, very good. So, consent calendar, all items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be elected by one motion without discussion unless Planning Commission staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. We have cards for item 7B, so that is removed by the public.
I also would like to pull 7A.
You're pulling 7A, okay. So, we will start with item 7A, Cailelaspolas, Avenida Florencia intersection. Start with staff presentation.
I'm Nestor Manego, senior civil engineer in traffic, and there is no staff presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any Commissioner questions.
All right, Zen, you brought this up?
Ah, yes, hi, Nestor. Can you identify the safety issue, and just describe how the proposal will improve the safety?
How the, the issue with the, the issue at this specific intersection is the width, the wide width, and the concern that was raised in the petition, and also in the follow-up meetings, was the speed at which cars travel around that corner, it's not typical by any, any means in terms of what a residential corner is, would be built, so the request for, the request by the neighbors on the corner, as well as the, the neighborhood meeting attendees, was to make it more conventional, so.
Is it a wide width?
Yes, right now, the corner radiuses on both the, what would be the southwest and southeast corners are 120 and 140 feet.
That's a radius?
The radius of the, the corner.
Not, not the width of the drive?
No, 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 the corner radius, but then it's also all open area, so we have your yield slip turn, yield lanes, and based on our observations, when you go out there, because the radiuses are so high and you have a yield lane, vehicles don't really have to stop going around, or they don't even need a brake necessarily going around the corner, it's such a wide turn, so the proposal that staff has in front of you is to make it more conventional, and that's what the neighborhood has indicated they would like to do, and the reason why we're doing it now is because this is some, we have bid items on our, our upcoming pavement project, and we can do it basically on the cheap and do it as almost a, a test case. We do have a CIP drainage project coming in to add some inlet and reconstruct curb, and if this is something that works for the neighborhood and they, they, they wanna continue in the future, then there's an opportunity along with that drainage project to make it more permanent and reduce the curb radius.
But, but say if you have a-
But, but say if you have a one-way street and it has a curve and people drive at 25 miles an hour, is that considered a safety hazard?
If you have a one-way street?
Yeah, you wouldn't consider that a safety problem. This is similar to that.
On a straight stretch of road, no.
It's designed that way, so it's expected to drive faster just because the radius is greater.
No, it's a yield intersection which often is, is ignored because once people are coming up at 20, 25 miles an hour, they don't have any reason to slow down. So, in terms of residents on that corner, where it differs from a typical straight section is that you don't have that sight distance coming around, so their concern is a little bit different from a, from a typical straightaway or a mid-block location.
You cited the policy, the traffic calming policy. Can you show us your assessment?
I could summarize the assessment for you.
Right.
Because the, basically the traffic calming guidelines, we're going to get into this on the, the next item, it considers not only speed and volumes, but it also considers pedestrian generators nearby and also accident history. And unlike the speed hump program for, cushion program, for example, it looks at the extent at which volumes are over a certain threshold and the extent that speeds are over a certain threshold. So, in this area, and one of the, I think the driving factors was the fact that its location, there is a good amount of pedestrian activity there. The way it's set up now is that there's not a sidewalk around those corners and that's another concern of the, the residents and also pedestrians that use the area.
Are you going to add a sidewalk to there?
Not with this, with this project, the temporary project, but should it be accepted by the community and we go into that drainage project, then we would, because they are touching both curbs there on that, on the edge with a large radius. So, it's just an opportunity, the way we see it, it's an opportunity to do it. If we pass on it, because we have a slurry seal project coming in, we don't have the same opportunity for two more years at least because we have a moratorium that's tied to the pavement projects, so it's just a matter of timing, but again, it's discretionary here, but they did meet the threshold in the traffic calming program.
So, so your proposal will make that potential sidewalk more feasible in the future?
It'll make the reconfiguration of the intersection, or that permanent fix, something that we can study to make sure it works, because when it comes down to it, these are just pavement markers. If something didn't work, we could remove them. If you built, or if you rebuild an intersection and then you regret it later, it's, it's too late. Typically, you have a lot of design money in there and, and construction built in, so this, we just see it as an opportunity to test it out, and that's what the residents' original petition did request.
Is there any accident or near miss incidents?
Florencia had two that were in the vicinity. This is going back three years. Bolis, to my recollection, did not.
Is there a current supposed speed limit at the?
25 both roads.
25? No, for, for turning?
No, there are no speed limits for turns.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just happened to talk to a couple of people in the neighborhood down there and I was down walking around and there also was kind of a, a line of sight concern with the pedestrian traffic down there and the way the curb and the speed at which they come around, around those curves, particularly when you're coming down Florencia and going to the right in particular, and so they were, some of the, some people that live there on that corner there were concerned, that's why, you know, they've generated this, this public, this neighborhood petition, which I think we definitely should, you know, honor and give great weight to and credibility to, but as you looked at it, there was, at the speeds that they're hitting, there is a limited sight of a reaction time trying to get out of the way, so to speak, that, that, two of the neighbors expressed to me when I was down there.
Okay. I had a question. Was there consideration given to putting a traffic circle here around about? There seems to be enough space for it.
There is space, it wasn't as well received by the neighbors. Some of them don't necessarily like the one that's near to the north and the west, so it was brought up, but then it was dismissed.
So, if there's, and would, would there be any greater cost to doing that? I know these, these are just kind of tabs in the ground as such, is, is a roundabout, would we maybe change the street geometry and require construction?
No, I think there's room, you know, in terms of the, the amount of room between curb and curb on the other side in the T, there's room to do it. We wouldn't recommend doing it because we didn't hear support for it, but I wouldn't say that it's not feasible.
From, from a, a traffic flow perspective, in terms of, you know, speed, noise, that sort of thing, is it, would it be more or less advisable or the same to have a, a roundabout there?
Well, I think the volumes basically are low enough that capacity doesn't become an issue where you need that traffic flow. If you go out there, it's not, it's not consistent traffic. Really, what's, the concern that I saw when I was out there was, were those turns. You know, you look at the 85th percentiles at the mid-blocks and they're, they're in line with residential speeds, but it's, it's really the, the high-speed turns, the lack of the sidewalk, which I think could both be remedied in the future with that drainage project that are driving this. So, really, this is more, although it was analyzed as part of the traffic calming project because we needed a mechanism to say whether or not it qualified to move on, it's really not a, a segment issue, it's the intersection issue there. So, we just haven't heard the desire to move forward with anything other than what we're proposing.
Okay. Michael?
Yes, so Nestor, say this concept goes through and then the permanent design is installed, we'd have sidewalks, do we have any landscaping?
Oh, it seems so. There's a lot of room there, so I can't imagine that we would just have it all blanked out with concrete.
I hope not. Okay, well, I was going to say we may have to add that to the recommendation just to make sure that that doesn't get overlooked.
This will, should this become an issue, should this become a project where it becomes permanent, are, we would propose to bring it back here anyway.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will mention, I, I think this corner does need something and this is, you know, one of the least expensive ways to do it, so that's good and it's reversible, right? Totally reversible for a minimal amount of money.
Question to staff. How big, how, how, how big was the sample size or the neighborhood petition? Was it 20 homes, 30 homes, 10 homes, just the intersection?
The petition itself was, I want to say in the 20s, it was basically the, the residents on the intersection and there were some outside.
Okay.
So, very much matched up against our radius, our notification area, 300 feet.
And the positive participation percentage?
Yeah, we had about 15, 17 at the, at the meeting and then they all were, yeah, let's hurry up and do this. We just have the opportunity to do it now because the pavement project, which I'm not managing, the timing just works out because that's already gone to bid, so whether or not this moves forward, the pavement project will move forward, so they'll see slurry and then if this doesn't happen, they'll just see what's out there, repainted out there once it's slurried.
Okay, I, I will say, I live near this intersection. It's good that something is being done. My, my personal preference is roundabouts. I think that they're better in a number of ways, but this is a solution that sounds like it's, the timing's good and, you know, we don't have to do any, any changes to street geometry or anything like that.
Well, it makes it, it's kind of in line with what the neighborhood wants, too, which I think we have to give a lot of credence to.
Yeah. Any more discussions or a motion?
I move we approve the project as presented.
Second?
Motion by Don, seconded by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 7B.
Commissioner Ruin, I live on that street, so I'll have to recuse and.
Okay.
Get rid of the discussion.
Thank you.
I do have a question about this next item. I know that Commissioner Brown is involved from the resident standpoint and this far outdates my time at the city, so I don't know whether you have to abstain totally or can you be on this side?
I'm going to stay out here and I'm going to draw the speaker card.
Perfect.
All right. So, speed cushions on West Paseo de Cristobal, 100 and 200 blocks. So, I assume you don't have a presentation for us? Okay, very good. Then I am going to open up the public hearing and we will start with Elaine Lister.
Thank you very much. Good evening, chairman and members of the commission. My name's Elaine Lister. I'm a resident on the 200 block and I'm here this evening to oppose the speed humps on my block. What you do on the, the 100 block, I, I won't stand, I won't state any objection to that, but I'm strongly opposed to them and let me go down a list. I took a look at the city's criteria, their guidelines, and basically this request does not meet the guidelines in one particular area. Number seven, the speed survey indicates 15% of the vehicles exceeding the 32 mile per hour speed limit. There's 2.9% of vehicles that do that, so does that meet the 15% criteria on the 200 block? No, absolutely not. It also does not meet it on the 100 block, but I'm just pointing that out, only 6%, 6.4% of the vehicles on the 100 block. So, my question is, it just seems to me you're sort of looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. Now, I understand and I saw in the email that came up that someone had been researching an accident, so I'm glad, I'm glad someone was researching that. Apparently, there had been one, but on the criteria here, it shows no accidents on either block, so I'm going for what is here, and again, when you've got, I'm not sure what the sample size, I'm going to presume it was 100 vehicles, maybe 50 cars each way surveyed, but basically you have two cars who are speeding, you know, above that 32 minutes, so to me, you're going to find two cars speeding on any street, no matter what. But getting a little more personal, my personal reasons for objection are noise, they, they make a noise, I've listened to them, it's thump, 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 and I've got two bedrooms, two-bedroom windows that are right there on, on the front of my residence and I really don't want to hear that, especially during the night. And vehicles do go down, they go down to the beach at all hours, really, so that's a big concern. Also, I think one thing that the neighbors should consider, they're completely unsightly. They're black, the rubber, I think they have highlight reflectors. To me, they send a really bad signal to, to potential home buyers that, hey, this is a bad street, don't, don't go here, so I'm opposed to it for that. While they're better than humps, they're also not completely ideal from a public safety response. Now, people will tell you, oh, it makes no difference, the CFA are fine with them. They are, but ideally, they would prefer not to have them. There, there's basically spaces in them that the emergency vehicles can go down. What they don't really tell you is that other vehicles can go down them, too, so you get vehicles in the center of the street trying to avoid it. Other reasons are you need signage, so it causes sign debris, they also collect dust and debris and litter and leaves, who's going to clean them? So, I'm just asking you to not find a solution where I don't think there's a problem, at least on my block. If you do still think there's a problem, there's other ways to do it, far better ways. I'd like to pass these around, it's an example of traffic management.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd encourage you to take a look. Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Charles Larwood.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Charlie Larwood and I live at 109 Paseo de Cristobal at the 100 block, and I'm here representing my family and many of my neighbors. I did file the original petition, I had a meeting at my house, and I had it for a reason. We have a speeding problem. We have a safety problem, and I'd hoped that by removing that center stripe, that would take care of it and it would solve the problem, but it didn't. Recently, we had an accident, I believe Mr. Brown may talk about that in, in more detail. If you tell me that 1% of the time people are speeding, it's too much. I've seen trucks coming down at 30 miles an hour, only 30 miles an hour. You get hit by a large moving van or a construction truck at 30 miles an hour, it will kill you. And we have a lot of kids on the street and we have a rule. You see a kid under the age of 10 and you say, where's your mom or dad, because you don't want to be out on that street. I respect Elaine's comments, you know, they can be perceived as unsightly. I've seen them, they can be, there can be noise associated with that, but thinking and looking at safety, saving a child's life, saving an older senior, saving my life, I mean, let's be honest. Some of these cars come down the street and they're zooming down there, and I've been here 18 years, and so I'm not making this up. And you can talk to almost anybody on my block, again, I'm not speaking for the 200 block, and the things that Elaine passed forward, they do work as well, the planted meetings in the middle of the street, but I just think there's no reason in neighborhoods that cars should be going any faster than 25 miles an hour, ever. These are neighborhoods where we live, and having a pedestrian-friendly environment that people feel safe, I personally feel that's a draw. I want my neighbors to know that there's a speeding problem on my street if they have small children especially, because I think it's dangerous. So, you know, we've tried the existing traffic calming, it's not working, so I'll keep my comments short because I want my voice and my neighbor's voice to be heard in support of this recommendation. I, I acknowledge there's other ways, but if we can get something in quicker and we can save one life, and I'm not just trying the pity party here, the accident I saw was devastating. Three cars were totaled, maybe not total, but it was a pretty bad crash, right out in front of the house, and this guy was going up the street probably, I don't know, over 40, 50 miles an hour. So, if this will help, I think it's something that we need to look at. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Don Brown.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Don Brown is a citizen of San Clemente. I also got involved in 2013 with Charlie with the original surveys when we did the traffic calming. I got, I did the, actually got the neighborhood input from the 200 block back in 2013, which was in excess of 70%. People were for it in the 200 block, and I think Charlie got the data from the 100 block. And the traffic engineer looked at the data at that time, there was higher, higher speeds back then and gave us the option of, of doing this before the, back then, we didn't have the speed cushions in our inventory and the speed humps, of course, took along, had a lot of resistance from the Orange County Fire Authority because they had to go all the way to Orange, City of Orange and their headquarter to get approved until these speed cushions came in, which they've now approved fairly well carte blanche, which makes the city engineering and the approval time a lot shorter. And so, we chose to go the route of just taking the center stripe out and putting a 10-foot side stripe in to try to do cap traffic calming, and it really didn't work. I'm surprised at the, the data that didn't show that high. And then what stirred the second petition was, remember, there was an application made by Owen Valencia, which this commission approved and the city council now has approved. During that time of the public outreach, staff knew there would be offloading coming when those cushions come in and they're approved and they're about ready to be installed. And so, we know if you look at your map, the next main highway to T Street Beach is Cristobal, followed by Espinon and Senior Moment here, the next street over. And we know those streets have also put petitions in because the, because staff did an outreach and mailed over, what, 1,200 cards out to the whole southwest, that whole district between Valencia and Trafalgar, because we know T Street is the draw and there's traffic and the speeding going back and forth. And so, we got this petition in, there's 72% in the 100 block and 67% in the 200 block supported it. The percentage would have been higher. I got the petitions and walked them around. I went to each house three times and if they weren't home, I finally put the petition in because I knew Espinon and Barcelona were right behind us, and so I didn't wait. I probably could have got the participations on the, on the, on the petitions and the 80% easily. In fact, several, many people came up to me in both blocks after I turned them in and were disappointed that I'd already done it without them. And recently, we did have an accident. I sent, did you find the pictures? It happened in May. There's about, there's a series of them there. I gave, sent them to Gabriel, who is on vacation, and hopefully she can get them one at a time. A truck about 4:00 in the afternoon, high speed, in excess of 50, 55 miles an hour, northbound, hit right across from me, that's one photograph. Four cars were severely damaged. More time, please.
If you can, if you can wrap up quickly?
Yeah, that's the accident there. There was four, three children on the, playing on the yard, in the front yard of Captain Perez, he's the Orange County Fire Authority, whose car, that's the blue car that destroyed everything. That's Captain Perez's two cars that got destroyed, took over two months to repair them. His three children were playing in the yards behind those cars and would save those children with those cars were parked there. Otherwise, we'd have.
I have to ask you to wrap up.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more, anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay. I'd like to ask staff to come up, it looks like there's some questions. Zen, did you have a question for staff?
A question for staff, but we'll have the staff to say something if you want to first.
No, he's here for your questions.
Okay. Nestor, so back in 2014, we removed the center line. Well, first of all, let me ask you a few questions about this. you a few questions about this evaluation form on number three, minimum street length of 800 feet. I checked the city's traffic calming policy in the resource manual. It says 1,200 feet. Was I looking at the wrong document?
One of my tasks since I've come here is to clean up the documents, because there is a lot of gray area between the two. In terms of street grades, in terms of percentage approvals, there's a lot, there are inconsistencies in there. So there is an 800 somewhere listed for the speed, in the speed hump policy. There might be in the specific cut sheet for the speed humps in the traffic calming program, the more wide-ranging program, it might say 1,200 feet. I think there's a discrepancy on grades between the two documents as well.
Okay. Well, that also answered my question about the street grade, because I saw 5% of that.
There's five and six listed. The national standard is eight.
Okay. Now, number seven, the speed survey indicates 15% of vehicles are exceeding the 32 mile per hour speed limit. The street has 25 miles per hour?
Yes.
So why 32?
That's a threshold that's very common in traffic calming programs, seven over the speed limit. So even the table is misworded, saying 32 mile speed limit. It's seven miles over posted speed limit of 25.
Now, a street is designed, for example, 25 miles per hour street is designed to so that 85 percentile percent of the vehicle will travel at 25 or less. So naturally, you expect 15% of the traffic to exceed that post-speed limit. But what is, assuming this is normal distribution, what is the percentage you expect from a standard case, a baseline case, that would exceed 32 miles per hour?
It depends on the street and factors specific to the street. I don't, I wouldn't characterize a 25 mile per hour street as expecting that a certain percent only would exceed. I think you'll find in most of the streets in any city that more than a percentage of vehicles exceed 25 miles per hour. The 85th percentile speed, which is, that's really alluding to 32 miles per hour, it's close to 30 on the street. So the number of vehicles that are going even faster than that, there are a handful. There are quite a few. And to answer the question on sample size, the 100 vehicles is typical of a speed survey, you know, very specific study. This counted probably about 10,000 vehicles over the course of a week on each of the streets. So it's a large sample size, and it records every one of them. And despite the 85th being 29 miles an hour, you know, obviously, you have your outliers that I think are what residents remember more, because you see the car going down at 40 or 50. You see the car going 40 or 50 that hit the other cars. Obviously, that caused a lot of damage. There's no real answer as to what the number should be. The 25 miles per hour on a residential street per vehicle code is not based on speed surveys. If it's defined as a local residential in the vehicle code, it's 25 prima facie speed limit. So the roads that we do require the speed surveys are those that are collector and above, those on the OCTA map, for example. And that's what we recently brought to you in terms of our speed surveys. But we had quite a bit of data on this to come up with that number.
Okay.
So there's not really an answer for every street in the city.
Thank you. For example, for 200 block, you list 2.9% of the vehicle would exceed 32 mile per hour. That's based on the current configuration. Back in March 2014, when you did that preview, when you removed the center line, prior to that, with the center line in place, what was that percentage?
The percentage was close. The take-home from this report is that the paint didn't do what was intended to do. And that's when the residents basically met the first time around, and there were options on the table. They opted to take the first phase of the options on the table, which was something that was less, was paint, which was less intrusive on that. So the intent was to always go back and see if it worked or not. And the fours and afters show that it didn't change. And so that doesn't mean that the neighborhood went away, or that they're no longer in the program because they got paint. They got a center line removal, or they added edge lines. That was the first try, and this is now the second try. They came back to the city with a petition for both blocks that exceeded 2/3. So going back to the basic criteria that's listed in the speed hump program, those are basic criterias. They're not by, they're not warrants. The MUTCD doesn't define speed humps, speed cushions, as traffic control devices. They call them roadway, roadway features. So there are no mandated warrants. There's no mandated dimensions or spacings that you'll ever find in the MUTCD. Agencies have their own criteria, which we have these listed. But we also have the statement in there that if 2/3 still wants to move it forward for Planning Commission consideration, despite missing one or more of the criteria, then we'll bring it forward. And that's why we're here today.
What was the rationale of removing the center line? Because apparently, once you remove the center line and mark the driveway, it's 20 feet wide, and the cars park on both sides, and that's about an eight. I think the curb-to-curb dimension is 40 here. So that's parking lane, if you call that, is about 10 feet wide.
Right.
Apparently, cars is only about 6 feet wide. So there's quite a distance from the parked car to the edge, to your paint. Now you have 20 feet clear. And I would actually encourage people to speed in my viewpoint.
No, the studies that were attached to the original, to the original report, listed, both studies in country and out of country, reducing a center line often reduces the speeds. And the reason is it creates friction on the edges. So when you have a center line, cars will tend to want to drive to the right of the center line. So they feel like they have that lane. When you don't have a center line, and you have two cars sharing, you'll watch vehicles, and they'll tend to drive closer to the middle of the road, and they'll move over when they need to. And that creates friction. Moving the edge lines out to 10 feet off curb, that creates friction, because then you have 20 feet of travel lane that's shared between the two directions. Cars know what they're doing in terms of moving over when they see a vehicle. And that's why center line removal is only recommended or can only be done on certain ADT roadways. It's specified in the MUTCD that anything under 6,000 vehicles doesn't need it. And then it becomes advisory, they think, around 4,000 or under both of those. So it's not necessary. But studies do show that it does, that it does often reduce speeds. It's just from our samples before and after, we didn't see that. So they opted to request the next step, which is cushions, which, like Commissioner Brown said, they weren't available back then, and they are accepted by OCFA. And just to clarify that vehicles, regular vehicles cannot travel through the cushions like a fire truck can. The wheelbase of regular vehicles are in the high 60s, whereas the width of these cushions are 72. Fire apparatus and also ambulance apparatus are typically 72 to 76. So they can straddle, vehicles will try to basically gutter run it. They'll put their wheels in one side. That often makes the impact a little worse. And some people will try to go over diagonal. That's the worst thing you can do, because you're getting shook side to side and up and down. So they do work for vehicles. I've had over, well, about 10 years of experience on cushions, and of all the installations, we'd heard noise a lot. We heard unsightly a lot. But from all the installations, we've never gotten one request to remove. And I think that speaks volumes, because typically, people are just relieved to be able to see the actual reduction in speed, from my experience.
Is it conceivable that if you add the center line back to the road, it would reduce the speed? Because people would be confined more or less within that 10 feet lane?
No, I don't think so. Because what will happen is, since it's 20 feet, then maybe they'll try to stay on their side of the road. But when, when they can, they'll cross that area, because they'll feel, they'll feel confined to that right side. So I don't think it'll cause slowing, if anything. What that does do is, I think, and this is one of the reasons why Valencia is widening out their buffer between the car and the line, is that people that try to access their cars feel like they're about to get run over, where the door's going to get torn off when they open it. So that's really creating a space for those accessing their cars and/or bikes to have a little buffer, since there's no, there's no painted bike lane. It just creates that extra, without painting a buffer, it creates extra space for both, well, not pedestrians, because there's sidewalks, but people accessing their vehicles.
I'm going to give other members a chance to speak. Michael?
Yes.
You have a question for staff?
Thank you. Thank you. Nestor, how many speed cushions are on Valencia now?
None.
None. How many are planned?
There are four locations on 100, I'm sorry. I say four locations because there's a median. There's two locations in each direction on the 100 block.
Okay. And are those locations approximately consistent with the locations on Cristobal?
Cristobal hasn't been determined yet. And one of, some feedback that I've heard is that if, we're trying to get through the answer whether or not we can use them as a device on this and get it to council, so we can maybe tie into that same pavement project, because Valencia is on that. So should it get through council that we can go ahead with this device, then the next step would be to locate where they would be. And one of the requests from a citizen was whether or not we could locate them in front of homes that said they wouldn't mind them. And that would be the goal. So that would be the next step, that I'd be working with the petition signers to locate them based on spacing criteria, but also try to put them in front of homes that did sign to minimize some of that impact to neighbors that either weren't able to sign or just flat out don't want them.
Okay. And so there was a speaker who was concerned about that, the location right in front of her home, and the noise that would be generated from it. So is it fair to say if it was moved maybe a house or two away, that noise would be minimized?
That's what we found in Encinitas, where we have used these, is that moving them a little bit does actually dampen the noise quite a bit. I don't, we don't have decibel readings, but we did look at moving certain things, certain cushions, five feet, 10 feet in one direction, and that seemed to help in those cases. And just to point out, in those cases, they weren't asking for them to be removed, because they didn't want the speed to come back to what it was. They just wanted to see if there was any wiggle room for a very, you know, precise placement.
Okay. And the speaker also mentioned unsightliness, specifically signage. Can you talk to us about the type of signage that would be used here?
There are warning signs, yellow triangular signs that say bump. And the MUTCD also wants an advisory plaque underneath that typically will say 15. So it'll be two signs as you approach.
Before each speed bump?
Yes.
So we would have four sets of signs?
Over the two blocks.
Yeah, okay. Are they reflective?
Yes, they have to be.
And how high are they?
Seven feet minimum to the bottom. That's just an MUTCD.
So these would be new poles in the ground?
Where there's opportunities, I don't know if we have any poles that we could use out there. But for example, on Coast Highway, we put out some pedestrian signs. And to the extent, we could use light standards existing, we did. Otherwise, if there's no opportunities, we would, we would use a new pole.
Okay. And then trash. Have we, is this, have we seen this? We do have some in town now. Is this a problem?
I've never heard of that, as being an issue in all the installations that I'm aware of.
No complaints?
No, you see, you will see things on humps, because they span the street, so things can get caught on those. But, you know, water and trash, I've never seen the same sort of issues with cushions, because there is more open space than there isn't. And there's nothing on these that would otherwise snag the bag or snag trash.
So these would be included in the street cleaning program, I would assume, that they would be addressed with any street cleaning, any maintenance that occurs?
Oh, yeah. They become assets of the city, so.
Regular cleaning.
We have maintenance that'll be charged to the city.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have now. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. The guidelines for installation of these speed humps and cushions, you have a section here that says conformance. Does a street need to conform on every line item to have a speed bump or cushion?
No, they don't. That's why, in our specific program in this city, there is a provision that states that even if it doesn't meet all the criteria, if 67% want to push it forward, or would want to bring it to Planning Commission, then we will do that. And that's the case with both blocks. Now, if there was anything unsafe, say someone was requesting it on a 14% grade street, and we felt it was unsafe as staff, then we would not recommend it. But there's nothing about these installations that pose a hazard from, from our perspective.
So would you recommend, so you're recommending the 100 block and the 200 block of Cristobal to have these speed bumps and cushions?
Yes. And I want to make a distinction here, because we will be coming back in the next month or two with other streets that don't meet some of the criteria, but also did not meet the, did not meet the criteria for the traffic program, traffic calming program in general. So we're looking at those as two very different streets, or two different requests, because this one does meet traffic calming, the program itself that was scored. And speed humps, cushions, they're just one of the many toolbox options that are allowed in that. So we don't see it as being, you know, you don't meet all the criteria, therefore it's off the table, because they did, they do meet the criteria for the program.
And a last question. You mentioned that you need, you're required to put in the hump and 15 mile per hour signs, correct?
Those are advisory. You just want to give them fair warning that there was a bump and that you don't want to take it at full speed or at full posted speed.
Now, have you ever seen signs that are painted actually on the street, possibly to minimize the poles?
Yes. Well, actually, those are in the MUTCD, the legends that say bump. That's in OCFA's specs to provide that pavement marker. But you can't use that in lieu of a sign. Actually, the MUTCD gives more credence to the sign and makes the legend in the ground optional, not vice versa. So depending on the way that, depending on the setup, there are ways of trying to reduce signage. There are ways of handling speed cushions that are in a series that you may be, you may only have to sign the first one if they are becoming in a series. And if that's the case, and the desire is to minimize the potential sign pollution, then we'll look at ways we can do that while still conforming to the MUTCD. We might be able to lose a sign or two.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Nestor. I have a couple of questions. One is, your recommendation, is it based on the fact that we've got a high number of residents who are asking for this? Or because as a traffic engineer, you see a specific need for the speed humps here?
Well, they qualified for the program that we have in place right now. The traffic calming program is a standalone. You know, they didn't have to, that's part of the reason why we're trying to clean it up. We've got two different programs. One is somewhat of a subset of the other, but they qualify. So again, it's not just a matter of meeting a certain speed. 32 miles an hour is not a magic number. So they didn't meet 32 miles per hour. But you also have to look at the surrounding pad and bike generators in the area, the activity on the street, and the amount that the volume actually exceeds over that 500 limit, is that that's more exposure to, to these other users on the street. So it's not just, it should never be as simple as just speed and volume. And you won't see any programs out there that just make the determination on just speed and volume. So I see the merit in it, for sure. There might be some areas that are out more isolated that may not, that may, you know, people don't mind not having sidewalks, but they don't also have the people that are riding bikes and walking as much. So that's a consideration. But the pad generator line item, which is maxed out in this case, it's maximum 20 points. They got 20 points, just due to proximity. I think that, that carries a lot of weight in this determination. So I, we would recommend it because it does meet the traffic calming program requirements, despite not meeting a criteria or two on the specific speed hump cushion program.
Okay, very good. I wanted to clarify that, that as a, as a traffic engineer, you feel that it's warranted and that it would be a benefit to the neighborhoods.
Right. And to clarify again, when I bring the others forward, it may not come with a recommendation to approve. And we'll, we'll go back to our reasoning why when we bring them back.
Okay. I also wanted to revisit this placement of the humps. You mentioned that it was a goal to perhaps try to keep the humps away from the homes of the people who object to it, put them in front of the homes of the people who are in favor of it. I'm hoping for a little more than a goal. In fact, they were, some years ago, they were looking at this on our street, and it was kind of set that if you didn't want a hump in front of your house, you weren't going to have a hump in front of your house. And is there, if the Planning Commission, for instance, made that as a specific recommendation, is that a recommendation that you could support in a poll?
In theory. But if there's, if there's a, an area where there is no good place to put it, then it would just come down to, well, you'll have this 600-foot space that, or you'll have an area where the criteria just doesn't meet our goals. So it's hard to say without mapping it out first. But I, and looking at it kind of from a cursory review, I think there are areas, it seems like 200 block is the more critical block here in terms of where we might need to be more careful with placement. And I found, I believe I found pockets in, you know, two locations where it's surrounded by residents that signed. But, you know, without actually laying them out. Because we also have to look at if there's any utility or any valves in the street. You don't want to block a driveway. So you want them to be between driveways, away from valves, away from valves, away from certain utilities. That becomes a little more of a puzzle than just saying, here's someone that said yes or no. We'll try to fit it all in. So I couldn't really tell you that that's going to be something that staff can accommodate at this time.
So if we can't accommodate it, what's, what's the answer? Do we not do the traffic hump or do we put it in front of someone's house who, who objects to it?
Well, my goal is to work with the two petition signers to get to that point where we're, where we can get some agreement to locations. Because what I think will happen, I know that there have been cases, like Don Brown had said, is that there were people that didn't say yes, but I think missed their opportunity to say yes. I know that's a case because on one of the blocks, you know, we found that one of the addresses weren't fronting, so we removed them from consideration. But then we heard from two more residents who said, well, I wasn't able to sign, but count us in. So I think in talking to some of the residents, once we start placing them, we might find some that don't mind. So it's hard, it's, it's difficult to say, but if it comes down to we can't place them because no one wants them, then I think we'll have to bring it back or it, or it goes away because that, that's typically one of the most difficult things in dealing with this is that you'll get some people that say they just don't, they don't mind them as long as they're not in front of us.
So, so if someone is going to get a hump in front of their house and they object to it, there's still, there's a process for them. They can come back to planning commission or there won't be a hump there or something like that?
There's also a process that's in the current guidelines for removal and it does, and it's, I'm surprised because it doesn't really take all that much. It's 51%, 50% plus one to bring it back for consideration for removal. So these aren't permanent. Even more specific to these types that we're proposing to do, they're even less permanent, they're bolt-in. And in other, in other instances where we've had street work, where we've had pavement or trench work, you can remove them and then reinstall them. So my, my, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that they can be removed if, if the residents just aren't happy with them.
Yeah, but that, yeah, I'm just trying to avoid picking, kind of picking winners and losers. I, I don't know if this would affect the value of the house, but I could see the possibility that, you know, where, where it might, I can understand the concern.
One of the biggest proponents of the larger jobs in my previous city was real estate guy. And it's funny because I've, I've heard dissertations from real estate guys on both sides. And when you, and you Google the studies, you'll find some on both sides. Some of the ones that are more recent that I, that I was searching for more recently that were closer dated, they don't provide data. They just kind of summarize things. So it's hard to get to an answer and I don't think there's been anything published that really says either way because there's also the, the, the statement that I've heard is that, not only from residents here, is that if you have traffic calming on your street, not just cushions, but any traffic calming, it sends a message that they're trying to make it slower. And so that's perceived as being more safe by some. Now, being unsightly, that's a judgment call. Noise, some people don't mind it, so that's going to be, that's going to be, depend on the, the resident. So there's, you know, a lot of this is going to depend on whose, whose house it is. Obviously, everyone's, uh, everyone has different tolerances for, for speed and noise and volume.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. So for the other commissioners, that's, you know, we have kind of an endorsement from the traffic engineer, and this is kind of my thinking, that it's an improvement for the neighborhood, but I do have a concern for some residents. I'm wondering if we could add in a recommendation or something that might, that might help protect that.
Excuse me, can I say something about the survey?
Well, the public comment, the period is over right now, so I'd rather have the, I'd rather have the, the commission speak to this. So, Michael, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking about public safety as kind of the overriding factor here. If there's even a half percent probability of it happening, that's too much. And if we can reduce that or eliminate that, you know, I'm a fan. However, I am concerned with some of the issues that the speaker brought up, noise, unsightliness. And, but staff has said that we could look at reducing signage, right? Reducing the signage.
There's a possibility of that.
So we could reduce that piece of it, finding a location that is suitable. But to Nestor's point, yeah, there are factors. What if everybody in that, you know, location didn't want it?
Not in my backyard, kind of thing, right? I want it in front of someone else's house.
Yeah, so it's, it's difficult. I can imagine, you know, why you wouldn't want to commit to that. But I, I would like to see that. I would like to see that happen. I think that these are valid concerns from residents and, you know, if you don't want one in front of your house, you have a right to say so, and I think we should consider that. I think that's a big part of it.
Okay. Chris, do you have a comment?
Well, I would recommend to send this to the city council. And there is a mechanism Nestor mentioned that if one of these was placed, that 50% plus one, I'm not quite sure what 50% plus one meant.
The majority of the street.
Of the street wanted that thing moved, then there's still a mechanism to have it moved or removed.
Yeah, we are, but we are saying, kind of what I'm concerned about is, is more than half the people on the street can essentially force someone to have this in front of their house who doesn't want to have it in front of their house. So that's, you know, that's just the, that's the situation. I'm hoping maybe there's some fervor or recommendation we can make to help avoid that kind of situation.
Well, I can say workshops are really valuable, situations like this where, you know, you go out to the community, you hold workshops and you come up with a design that is the best case scenario, not always ideal for your party, but it, you know, it gives an opportunity for folks to talk about what their concerns are and locations to be identified. And, and then that moves forward from that point on.
Is there another neighborhood workshop plan when, when you identify the full design and placement of everything?
No. What I've found that's been more efficient in previous cities, I'm going to come up with a spacing criteria. I'm going to map out all the parcels that basically said yes and then try to fit it in within the spacing criteria and I'm going to share it with the residents. Well, they don't know it yet, but the petition signers, I'm going to look for some assistance in, in soliciting feedback from the effect, the directly affected neighbors. We've also done it previously by sending out mailers to those directly around the treatment. But considering we're chasing this other project in terms of timeline, I think I might be quicker to do it, you know, door to door if we can come up with locations. And it oftentimes becomes an iterative, iterative process at that point. So maybe a cushion can move another 50 feet and you're still within, you know, reasonable spacing. And then it'd be, okay, well, then ask this cluster because this one can be set. So I think it's going to be that sort of an exercise and it all starts with an initial recommendation and then back and forth. I don't, I hesitate to do it at a workshop because a lot of times people don't show up to workshops and then it'll still become an issue of, well, the majority at the workshop decided for the people that weren't there because there was no clear cut answer. But if we're able to do it more on a one-to-one, you know, if not door to door, then you can actually ask the people before we know we're now proposing it. And it's only trying to solicit from four or five residents as opposed to noticing the entire block that may not show up because it might not affect them.
So I will just ask you if maybe you'll make a special effort with contacting Ms. Lister? Because she took the time to come down here and has a particular concern about it, so make sure that she's.
Certainly, that's exactly what I've been, that's the area I've been focused on because we have had conversations about that. So there will be special attention to that, the east side of the 100 block.
Okay.
30% of those signers or renters who are no longer there.
Yeah, excuse me. Mr. Brown, I'll ask you to, to, you know, perhaps work with other people on your street. I know you worked very hard to get this put together, so.
You work for OCFA, you live next door to me.
Okay.
We'll coordinate the 100 and 200 blocks.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry, Chris, did you have more you wanted to talk about? Zen, did you want to add something?
I think a fundamental reason for this, you know, this street has a wider curb to curb dimension. It's about 36 feet. The neighboring street is about 32 or so. So when you have the car parking on both sides, suddenly that's the space between the parking cars are much wider, about four or five feet, four feet wider than the other, other street or especially neighboring street. I had some concern, except for the southwest St. Clemente, much of the city was built to that standard, 36 feet curb to curb. It's known now today that it's too wide and induce the faster speed. But so a lot of people want it, so eventually do we have enough resource to accommodate those needs? But in this particular case, I think it's exacerbated by the, the fact that the neighboring street is narrower, so the speed there is slower. It's possible that some people would choose this street to, to go down because they can drive a little faster. And so for that reason, I would support this to go to the city council. Because essentially what it does is it's trying to figure out a way to bring the speed down to be on par with the neighboring street. And I welcome this experiment. I hope that our first trial will be successful. But there are multiple tools that I hope that you can try and eventually figure out what is the best solution for, for the, for the city. So for that reason, I would, I would support it. And if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion to move this item to.
Before, before you start, if you don't mind, it sounds like there's some general agreement on this. We have a minimum quorum here, which means that for anything to pass, we need unanimity. So just as an extra precaution, I just would like to take a straw poll. Just people who are, the commissioners who are leading in favor of this item, if you could just raise your hand.
But before, yes, I would support it, but Mal, can you tell us, do we need a unanimous vote on that? I think a three out of four would suffice.
Commissioners, for items that include a resolution, it requires tonight four votes. This isn't a resolution item, so we actually could have three votes, but the ideal would be to have four votes because we only have the, the bare minimum of quorum tonight.
So, did you raise your hand for that, straw poll?
I did.
You did, okay.
But what's the recommendation?
Yeah, I have one too, so go ahead. I mean, so before you make your motion, let's, you know, hear what the recommendations are.
Well, the recommendation would apply to, to the placement, that, you know, we work with the residents to make sure we have consensus, door to door. I like that. Making sure, making sure to work with Ms. Lister and finding a location that's suitable and still meets our objectives. And reducing the signage wherever possible. And I don't know about the paint, but did we end up deciding on the paint, the street painting?
Well, that's in OCFA's spec, so we would.
We'd have to vote.
Well, no, we can, we can verify with them on that. METCD doesn't require, my previous city, we never did, in order to reduce some of the markings and some of the, you know, the extraneous signage and markings that go along with it. So if there, if that's something that planning commission wants to look to reduce, then I would mention that. And if we can do it, I don't think OCFA would really fight that too much.
I just want to minimize it to the greatest extent we can, but still have it be functional, right? That's the point.
Yes.
Thank you.
And how the other commissioners feel about that in general? Minimize the signage and work with the homeowners who don't want placement in front of their house?
The board.
Okay. All right, then if there's nothing else, Zen, if you'd like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to move the item 7, 7B to the city council to consider, for the recognition to the city council to implement speed cushions on 100 and 200 block level, West of Paseo de Cristobal with amendments enumerated by Commissioner Blackwell.
Is there a second?
All second.
Moved by Zen, seconded by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes you now. Okay. Elaine? All right. I, our next item is republic hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Before we jump into staff's presentation, I would like to ask Mal to give us a brief review or, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I will be recusing from this item. I've got conflict with a recent client.
Okay, very good, thank you. These cell towers have constraints and restrictions that are a little unusual for us for continued conditional use permits. So Mal's going to give us a little overview so that we can stand the straight and narrow. So please.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll be, I'll be brief because this is fairly simple. So we have at play here both federal and state law, which significantly restricts the discretion the planning commission has with regard to cell facilities, especially in light of recent FCC regulations which have been promulgated. The city really has, has limited ability. That ability is to regulate time, place, and manner of, of, of cell sites. And so we can look at aesthetics, for example. We cannot, however, look at the health impacts of a cell facility as long as it is shown that the facility being proposed is compliant with, with, with federal standards. And so we cannot take into consideration anything having to do with, with those impacts. There are also what are called shot clocks that are applicable to cell site applications. So if the commission were to continue this tonight past a certain date, and Katie will have those dates available, we could be out of compliance with FCC regulations. Unfortunately, there is nothing that we can do about those federal regulations. The, the FCC as well as state law has given wireless companies pretty significant rights when it comes to citing their facilities in the right of way. One, one final note, there was a recent case out of San Francisco that is often cited by those who are not, are not huge fans of the wireless industry as, as evidence that a city can, can regulate wireless facilities. That case stands for the proposition that a city is entitled to, again, regulate the time, place, and manner of the location of wireless facilities. In that case, San Francisco imposed certain aesthetic requirements on the placement of wireless facilities. Again, that's really the only thing that the commission can do this evening with regard to those wireless facilities is look at whether the time, place, and manner of their placement is, is consistent with the aesthetics and the purposes of the general plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Katie has a presentation which will also touch on some of these issues.
Very good. Chris, you have a question?
Just one question. Time, place, and manner, does place mean location?
Yes, it, it means location, but only, only insofar as the location being proposed would, would impact certain aesthetic purposes of the city. So the San Francisco case, the, the placement of the wireless facilities being proposed was in high visibility areas with significant views, as you can imagine in San Francisco. So if the city wanted to not permit a wireless facility here in San Clemente in a specific location, we'd have to make findings that that location had some, some aesthetic value beyond most locations. Now importantly, we cannot deny wireless facilities in such a way that would prevent customers from having access to wireless, right? So, so we cannot effectively prohibit, if you will, wireless access by denying a facility. So we have to be very cautious when we exercise our time, place, and manner authority.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mal? All right, then Katie, please, why don't you tell us about the permits?
Great. Good evening, planning commissioners. Katie Crockett, associate planner. My presentation this evening is for five CUPs under consideration for AT&amp;T small wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right of way. The five applications under consideration are summarized on the screen, but before we get into too much detail on each of those, I wanted to give you a little bit of background about what these wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. The five applications under consideration are summarized on the screen, but before we get into too much detail on each of those, I wanted to give you a little bit of background about what these wireless telecommunications facilities are, which then in turn, I hope will make some of the details a bit more clear. Small wireless telecommunications facilities are referred to as small cells. Small cells are a somewhat recent deployment in wireless infrastructure, although they've been deployed throughout the country over the last several years. Instead of traditional macro sites, which there are a couple of photos up there with large clusters of nine to 12 antennas and large ground-mounted equipment, small cells are one or two antennas with very little associated equipment, which are sometimes mounted to traffic signal and streetlight poles. Small cells do not replace the larger macro sites that we're used to seeing, but help to augment the service they provide. Antennas are regulated in the zoning code as a public utility and require conditional use permit. The Design Review Subcommittee has reviewed the applications and provided recommendations, which the applicant has incorporated into their proposal. In addition to city regulations, there is a body of federal and state regulation that Mal just gave us an overview for that preempts or limits the city's ability to enact certain limitations or review certain things related to permitting cell sites. As wireless technology and the way we use it continues to evolve, the FCC continues to enact more and more limitations on local authority. One limitation to note is the shot clocks. Three of these have one shot clock deadline and two have a different one, depending on when they were determined to be complete. It's essentially the beginning of October. The specific dates are in the report, and we can refer to them later if needed. And they are more restrictive than the Permit Streamlining Act, which is what we're used to complying with in most discretionary applications. Another limitation is the ability of local agencies to consider health and safety impacts, which I won't go into anymore since Mal covered that for us. There are a myriad of other non-city regulations that the city is obliged to comply with. For example, since these are sites that are public utilities in the right-of-way, we cannot be more restrictive with these types of facilities than we are with other types of infrastructure providing utilities, for example, in the right-of-way. And that's especially important when we are talking about aesthetics. The FCC recently did adopt new regulations specifically related to small cells, and the city is currently working on an ordinance to address those new regulations. We'll actually be taking an informational report to the city council on August 20th, should you be interested in that. And then the ordinance will be coming to you for recommendation to the city council at a later date. We don't have that in place now, so any potential regulations we have there are not in place for these applications. The primary takeaway from all of these other regulations is that the city cannot prohibit or effectively prohibit service in any area of the city. So this project involves the placement of five small cells on light poles within the row. The location map is also available on page three of the report, if you need to reference it later. Each small cell proposed consists of one antenna and small radios mounted to the top of a replacement streetlight. The radios are screened within an equipment shroud. All conduit and other wiring is contained within the pole itself. Ground equipment is located in a small underground vault near the base of the pole, so there's no additional ground clutter. The height of the poles would increase between 3 feet 9 inches and 4 feet 9 inches from what's existing, with a maximum pole height of 34 feet 9 inches. The equipment shroud will be colored and textured to match the pole as called out on the plans and required in Condition 5.10. So now, I'll go into a few specifics for each project site. Site one is located on the north side of Avenida Vista Hermosa, approximately 235 feet east of Camino Vera Cruz. And there's a location map and an existing photo. It's located between low-density residential within Forrester Ranch and undeveloped open space in Marblehead Inland. The nearest occupiable structure is approximately 75 feet away, and as you can see in this photo, is fairly well-screened from that residence with dense vegetation. Here are two photo simulation views of the proposed installation. Complete photo sims for each site are Attachment E, so this one's Attachment 1E, 2E, 3E, and so forth. Site two is located on the south side of Avenida Vista Hermosa, approximately 1,000 feet west of Camino Vera Cruz. It is located between RL-Zoned Forrester Ranch and RL-Zoned Marblehead Inland. The nearest occupiable structure is approximately 100 feet away, and the pad of that residential structure is at approximately the same height as the top of the antenna. Site three is located on the west side of Caie Manassar, at the intersection with Caie Cordiera, within the Rancho San Clemente Business Park. The nearest occupiable structure is approximately 145 feet away, and the building pad of that structure is approximately 32 feet lower than the base of the light pole. Site four is located on the north side of Camino Vera Cruz, approximately 268 feet west of Avenida Pico. It is surrounded by commercial properties in Rancho San Clemente and undeveloped open space in Marblehead Inland. The nearest occupiable structure is the Circle K Convenience Store, approximately 75 feet away. Site five is in the center median of Avenida Vista Hermosa, approximately 966 feet west of the West Sports Park driveway, surrounded by undeveloped open space in Forrester Ranch. The nearest occupiable structure is approximately 533 feet away, and the nearest field at the sports park is over 1,300 feet away. So that concludes site-specific here. Staff did receive one written statement opposing the sites, which you received earlier today, and I believe was available to you in hard copy this evening. Staff also had a discussion with a council member who was interested in the project and had several questions for me today. No comments were received that provided new information or concerns not related to RF exposure or any information that would invalidate any of the findings made by staff. So to conclude, full analysis related to compliance with the zoning ordinance and the general plan are contained in the report, specifically Table 1, and findings are made in the draft resolution for each site. Generally, the proposed installations will not affect the use of the row for traffic, bicycles, or pedestrians, and will not interrupt other utility service or lighting in the row. The maximum height and design of the poles are in character with other streetlights and infrastructure. Streetlights are a typical occurrence in both commercial and residential areas and are not a visually dominant part of the streetscape. And by utilizing existing light poles, as opposed to adding a new pole for the sole purpose of providing this utility service, it does minimize visual clutter. Because the applicant has demonstrated their compliance with FCC limits for RF exposure and will be required to conduct a field test once the site is operational to verify that they are within those requirements, the city is precluded by the FCC from denying the projects based upon concerns related to RF emissions on the health and safety of individuals. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine that the projects are exempt from CEQA and adopt resolutions approving each of the five proposed AT&amp;T cell sites. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, as well the applicant. Several representatives for the applicant are here who would be able to answer any questions you have for them.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Don?
Yes, does this particular installation or any... Portend any automatic approval in the future for 5G as it comes in with different frequencies in other areas, or is... Will they have to come back to the city for approvals for 5G?
The sites, as they are now, are not specifically 5G. My understanding is that rollout of that is still a ways off, and there are no current plans to roll that out in San Clemente in the near future. However, the equipment on these sites could potentially be swapped out in the future to support 5G technology. Those changeouts, if they are compliant with the provisions of Section 649A of the Spectrum Act, which is a federal regulation, the city, provided they fall beneath thresholds in that legislation, the city would not be able to bring those back forth to a public hearing. So they would be reviewed at a staff level for compliance with various, with the applicable regulations, both city and state and federal.
Okay, so if frequencies change and all that stuff, that's all covered?
So right now, for example, when... So we have a variety of macro sites. You saw photos of two of them. When those sites swap out equipment, for example, they change antennas or even add additional antennas, city staff reviews those administratively as required under the FCC. And at that time, unless they're removing equipment, we do ask for an FCC compli... I'm sorry, an RF compliance report. So if that's the concern, that will happen regardless of whether it goes to a public hearing.
Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant like to step forward and make any comments to the Planning Commission?
Good evening, Chair. Many members of the Planning Commission. My name is Franklin Roscoe. I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T and Ericsson as the applicants for these five small cell facilities. We're pleased to be here with you and be, you know, the first wave of these particular small cells. They are placed in areas where we're looking to... AT&amp;T is really looking to be able to increase their capacity needs and coverage needs that it's needed in several portions of the city. And as Katie Crockett mentioned, these are small cells in that we use an existing infrastructure in terms of we're co-locating, you know, per se into streetlights where we're not disrupting the urban landscaping of the city. We concur with the findings and conditions and recommendations of the staff, and we seek your support on all these facilities. And I'm here to ask the questions for you, as well as we have here members from AT&amp;T, Mr. Tetsukawa Samcha, and Mr. Ricard Soderberg.
Okay. Don, did you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, I noticed through Design Review that you... I guess there's 13 sites total that you're planning on bringing into the city. There's been reviewed at Design Review, 15, 13?
Yeah, a lot. I can't remember how many.
A lot, okay. So you have other waves coming. At present, are all your installations going to be on top of right-of-way city light poles? Is that your concept right now, or is AT&amp;T going to go in another direction later?
No, that is correct. Out of the... All the ones that you, the Design Review Subcommittee have reviewed, there's one that is actually a utility pole. There might be situations where if the utility pole is available, where no other, you know, streetlight would be available, that would be a choice. Again, it really depends on the location.
Because a utility pole, the low voltage part is the lower mounting, so you're lower, closer to the street on a telephone pole-type thing, utility pole. So you do have a similar... Is it a different-looking antenna, or is it the same structure just mounted lower on the utility pole?
Don, is this for something that's not on the application?
Well, I think in the future, they might have one that's not on a light pole. I just wanted to make sure they have a design that's compatible with a telephone pole, because it's going to be down about 10 feet. You know, the low voltage part of a telephone pole is about 20 feet off the ground.
Yeah, I'm just worried about going over stuff that's not in the...
Okay.
Not in the agenda, so...
I just wanted to ask in the future.
I understand, but I'm a little worried about that, so. Zen, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm happy that you picked the tapered profile for this utility pole and a streetlight pole. They just look much better than a straight profile. I do want to ask you, in terms of the color, what type of color are you going to use to paint those devices?
The proposed color is going to match the aggregate looks of the pole, especially the shroud itself, and I believe also the antennas can be. But it's gray, it's a gray color. So I think if you look at the photo simulations that were produced for each individual location, it will match, and that's the intent, to match the aggregate color of the pole.
Okay. Well, my desire is perhaps we can paint it with different color to reduce the visual impact.
Let's... Can we keep this to questions right now? And if you want to talk about a different color, we can look at that during discussion.
I have a follow-up question. I haven't asked him.
Okay.
Are you open to different colors in the sheen?
What's the suggestion?
Are you open to the idea that we ask you to paint it with a different color?
Yeah.
Does it have to be the silver color that are matching the pole?
Yeah, again, our intent is to kind of go with what's there now. But I'm sure if you have a color, specific color you want to recommend, I mean, we definitely can look into that.
I just want to make sure that a different color doesn't interfere with the function of your device.
Correct, yeah. To the extent that the actual antenna itself, I think we mentioned this at the Design Review Committee, that the paint itself is not metallic, it wouldn't interfere with the antenna. As far as the shroud is concerned, the shroud is just basically a material that doesn't, you know, it's not the function of the antenna itself. So it's just covering all the radios and the disconnect switch inside.
Okay, thank you.
Don, did you have another question? No. Okay. I did have a question. When we were looking at this at Design Review, you had shown us a couple of options. One was this tapered model, and the other one was a more straight version.
Yes.
Is that straight version still a possibility, if the Planning Commission would prefer that?
If there is a situation where you would feel that that would be appropriate, yes, we have both. I think we looked at every single situation and looked at the surrounding poles, and whether, you know, a particular pole was in close proximity to another, we tried as much as possible to meet that taper design, rather than just go with the straight 12-inch diameter pole with the shroud attached to it and the antenna.
Okay, thank you. And Katie, do we happen to have a picture of the one of these, the other designs there, just in case? We want that discussion. Okay, we don't need it right now, but when we get to discussion, we might, so. Does anyone else have any questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. I will open up the public hearing. I have two cards so far. The first one is Richard Soderberg.
He's a representative for the applicant.
Oh, okay, very good.
And he's available to speak, should he be.
Very good, thank you. And Franklin... Oh, Franklin Roscoe, okay, great. So I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak to this? If not, then I will close the public hearing, and I will open it up to Planning Commission discussion.
I guess I'm going to be supportive of the proposal, and from a discussion standpoint, I think I appreciate Design Review Subcommittee's effort on this, particularly the tapered pole, and I think that colors are compatible. So I'd... And the taper, I'm more comfortable with a tapered pole, I guess, I think aesthetically, for whatever. I think you guys did good work down there the first time through, so I'm supportive of the proposal as presented.
Okay. Maybe before we talk more about that, Katie, could you put a picture of that, the other model up there? And I will, just to talk on this a little bit, since I brought it up, this and the tapered model were shown. The tapered model, when we were doing our discussion, they... I think in general, we like the taper model, except that when you have the taper model, you've got the antenna on top, which looks kind of bulky, because it's larger than the top, because of the taper. It's much larger than the top. With the solid one, excuse me, solid or the single-width one, you can see the antenna is flush, which I think looks less... You know, when I was in Design Review, I thought that looked less awkward. So I did want the commission to see that and judge it. I kind of felt like, you know, we didn't have perfect options going either way, but this might be something that to consider, just because these single poles might look a little less awkward or pokey as a result, so. Chris, do you have comments?
I'm supportive of the project. I'm happy to see that these things fit on the poles that already exist, and they don't appear to be visually impacting any, anything negatively. be visually impacting any, anything negatively, so I'm supportive of the project.
Okay. Zen?
I support the project. I think the tapered one looks much better. It's more natural. If you think about natural things around us, the trees have tapered chunk. Perhaps for a tapered pole, the shroud, it looks a little bigger, but that's okay because you can, conceivably, you can, you can call that a anther at the end of a filament or stigma on top of a style, you know, those types of things. Sometimes, we have some speaker or the other day I went to Vista Hermosa, there's a huge lighting pole and the lighting fixture, they group it together on top. It's, it just looked like a seed head over a stalk. So those things more or less emulate natural things, which is what makes it look more natural. When you have a straight, straight profile, it's unnatural. So I support this one. The only comment I'd like to make is that when I look at the photo of staff report, page four, the shroud does stand out from the background of the sky. So I want to see if we can have the applicant to paint them a little, a little darker color. Of course, they need to be low saturation. The color can be, as dark as not to stand out from sky or trees. The hue can be green. In other words, a low saturated, dark green color. Or it could be low sat, it could be just a dark gray color. So it just recede a little more and doesn't stand out. They own a sheen over the paint. If it's possible, I'd like to see a flat sheen, not any glossy things to reduce the potential glare. So that's the only recommendation I'd like to make based on the current design is that to, to make the color to more muted and more hidden from the background.
So, does anyone else have any feelings about the non-tapered design or is it just me?
I really like the tapered design.
I like the tapered design in general. It's just that once you put something on top of it, then it kind of spoils the effect.
I would note for public, we approved a small dispersed site like this about four or five years ago, down around like Knucklehead. The antenna array is down towards the west part of El Camino Real, over by the, the community center. Their antennas are significantly smaller than this. Their little whip antennas, remember they went halfway up the telephone pole and then there was one in Knucklehead that went on top of the, it's still there, I went by and looked at them. They're significantly smaller antennas and as far as diameter, maybe they have, you know, less coverage required. I don't know what AT&amp;T is, they're probably one-third the volume size of your antennas. Just for the public record, we do have some experience in these things. And there's about seven or eight of them down in that arena down there. Community Center, Pizza Park and Rec, headquarters right across on Seville, Ola Vista, that whole general area, because they, these have short range, but I'm kind of fine with tapered. And you can start trying to camouflage things all you want and you chase your tail forever. Forty years of flying airplanes and we tried more schemes, how to camouflage airplanes. So I don't even go there, do the best you can, what you got, so do the best shot, I think, which you've got a pretty reasonable, makes it look like the pole thing, so I'm willing to go with what you have.
And for me, the color, I think, is fine if you're, you know, it, I think it's probably as close match to the pole as they can get and these, these are photorealistic simulations, so we're probably not seeing it exact. If you get a cloudy sky, you're going to see a different background to the, you know, to that. So I don't, there's not, there's not going to be any perfect solution unfortunately with that, so. So anyway, it sounds like there's some general agreement. Does anyone have a motion they want to make?
Do we need to make five motions here or six or whatever?
I think we need to make five motions, yeah.
Is that what, you're brutal, Katie.
You can make one motion and just include each of them in the one motion.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Would you like me to try to do that? I am moved that we, planning commission adopt or approve resolution number PC 1019023, 024, PC 19025. I color-coded these, so I think anticipation of reading them all. 26, and PC 19027, resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit 18529. Are these numbers? Yeah, oh my goodness. All the numbers in the body now are changed. Does that, have to be covered then? Like permit 18529, CUP 18529, small cell DNAP 001, a request to install and operate a small wireless facility on the city streetlight pole on the public right-of-way of 802 Avenida Vista Hermosa CS on the north side of the Avenida Vista Hermosa approximately, 235 feet easterly of Camino Vera Cruz. Then PC 19025 has a CUP number of 18533, site number MSVJ113, 791 Avenida Vista Hermosa. PC 0925 is CUP 18540, AT&amp;T site ID MSVJ1001, 19948 Calais Amont, Amontcer. And then PC 19026 is CUP 18541, AT&amp;T site ID MSVJ1002, 2801 Camino Vera Cruz. And finally for PC 19027, CUP 18543, MSVJ01, 004, 901 Avenida Vista Hermosa. Assistant City Attorney, does that cover it all legally?
You are covered legally.
We have a motion by Don, a second by Zen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. We are on to item 9A, new business. The first thing I want to say about this is we just want to be a little bit careful because we're going to be talking about some, some process regarding interpretations. And the interpretation, specific interpretation in question was generated by two minor permits, an MCU P and an MCHP. And we just don't want to get into the merits of those two permits because they're going before the zoning administrator tomorrow and there's an outside chance that they could be coming to us one day someday. So, so other than that, we can talk about the interpretations or the process of how we got here. And I will deputize Mal and say, feel free to interrupt us immediately if we start to color outside the lines.
Just, just to emphasize that, this conversation can be wide-ranging regarding the interpretation process, how that works at planning commission level, at staff level. We should not discuss the substance of the applications that, that could eventually come before the planning commission. So I will definitely play referee over here if it gets to that point.
Perfect. Thank you. Stephanie, you want to give us the high level and feel free to kick it back to me.
Sure, sure. Good evening, planning commissioners. Stephanie Rojas, senior planner. So this item was placed as a new business item at the request of vice chair ruling at the most recent design review subcommittee meeting. As the staff, the short staff report summarizes, there is a section within the zoning ordinance that gives the city a certain degree of discretion when it comes to areas of the zoning code that are ambiguous or unclear. And that's especially the case when it comes to new business concepts. Because, you know, as the market changes, there's going to be some unique and different business concept out there that just doesn't fit neatly within the land use classification specified within our zoning code. So for that reason, that's, we have a section of the code that allows the city to create interpretations, to find a land use classification that's most similar to that proposed use. Essentially, the way that the zoning code works is that there's two different classifications. There's major and minor interpretations. Major interpretations are made by the planning commission. Minor interpretations are made administratively by the city planner. And your, your agenda packet includes an example of a major and a minor interpretation that was recently done. And I think with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to vice chair ruling.
Okay, very good. I will also mention that Jason Tally sent an email out. I think you all got it and had a chance to read it. Is that true regarding this issue?
I've seen it.
Okay. Okay, very, I just wanted to make sure you guys got it for the record. So I had requested this item be put on the agenda, so you can blame me for the extra time. The reason I did was because when we were in design review a few weeks ago, we were asked, design review was asked to provide a recommendation regarding this minor interpretation. And as you can see from the minutes of the meeting, that we had some concerns. One was with the substance of it itself, we had a real concern about the interpretation of a tasting room being a restaurant, more like a restaurant than a bar, even though they're not serving food. We also recommended that this be, actually move to the planning commission because it seemed, we had done something like this in the past. It was actually very similar, it was another tasting room, but they had some brewery capability. And that was looked at by the planning commission and a determination was made for that. And in fact, the opposite determination, that this was more of a bar than a restaurant. So with those two, so I, so that happened and then I did have a chance to see the interpretation, saw that the interpretation was that it was minor, that it was interpreted, interpreted as a restaurant and that the concerns that the, that they were, that they, the recommendations they requested from the design review weren't really, you know, addressed or intended to be wrestled with in there. So I wanted this to come before the planning commission because I thought it was important to raise it to your level, let you, so you guys understood what was going on, have something on the, on the record. Give us a chance, if the commission wants, to voice any concern or, you know, pass a recommendation on to city council if the commission feels like it's warranted. So that is the, that's what's got it here. That was my concern and why I wanted to put it before you guys. Obviously, we saw from Jason, you know, his, his concerns about it. So let me just open it up to the floor. Does anyone have any, you know, questions about what went on or at least from my knowledge about it or staff's knowledge or have any discussion they want to have about it? Chris?
Yeah, I have a question. What, where's that line between a minor and a, and a major interpretation?
Well, it's written in here, but maybe, Mal, I'm going to toss that to you just to be precise about it.
Sure. If, if you turn to page two, it's attachment one of the, of the item, where you have section 17.04.040 of the municipal code, subsection E includes the operative language. So whether it's a minor or major interpretation is determined by the city planner. And that decision is made based on whether there are going to be public impacts or concern associated with the issue. If the planner decides that there are no public impacts or cultural public concern, then it's minor. If there are, then it's major. That is a subjective decision. There's no definition of what public impacts would be or concern would be that is left to discretion of the city planner. But that, that, that really is the crux of the entire issue, right? If there are or aren't impacts or concern associated, that determines whether it's a minor or major interpretation.
And the challenge, if the city planner decides one way or the other, is there some sort of a, I mean, it's really, like you said, it's up to the city planner to decide whether it's minor or major and the city planner gets to decide whether it creates a public impact?
That's, that's correct. It is a city planner's decision.
And that's not, it doesn't seem to be reviewable.
So it is, it is reviewable. The, within 15 days of that decision being made, the applicant may request that the interpretation be forwarded to the planning commission. And so there is an appeal process available to the applicant.
So the review is initiated by the applicant?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Now, now this, this language does not track exactly the, the call-up and appeal language in, in the city's municipal code, but where an applicant has an appeal right, other individuals would have the exact same appeal right. So for example, the planning commission, a council member, a resident could also call this up for review or appeal it as the case may be, even though it only lists the applicant here. The, the due process clause of the constitution would require that anybody would have the same appeal right.
So if the city planner makes a determination in favor of the applicant, there isn't an appeal, that the appeal right to the public?
In favor of the applicant, meaning?
So if the city planner makes a determination that is favorable to the applicant?
So for example, if, if they determine that it's a minor interpretation?
Yes. And the public wanted to appeal that, there's no appeal process?
They would have the same appeal right.
No.
Yeah. The public, planning commissioner, council member, it's a 15-day appeal, right? Now importantly, that is not written into the ordinance, right? The ordinance only permits an appeal right to the applicant, but if the applicant has an appeal right, then others would necessarily have the same appeal right or the ability to call that up.
And could they only apply, appeal that to city council? Could they appeal that to planning commission?
It, it appeals the planning commission. So the first step is a planning commission.
Would the planning commission have an appeal right?
The planning commission could call up that interpretation for review. It's, it's the same.
Same thing.
It's the same thing, it's just different language based on the case.
Does the 15-day rule apply to the planning commission?
It would apply, yeah.
Because I mean, from some, some recent events here from a time-space function, this is the first time we've met and this thing is, the 15 days is expired from the date of the actual determination. So, you know, the timing of this particular interpretation versus the first opportunity the planning commission even call it up kind of negates that, which is kind of unsettling.
So typically what you'd see with, with, with your standard application or approval, right, is, is notice provided to the, the planning commission, to the council, which would then allow them to be aware of, of the decision that's been made so as not to push beyond that 15-day appeal period without understanding what's, what's, what's gone on.
So there has to be a notice to the planning commission?
It's not, it's, it's not required, but that's typically what you'll see.
So given, given that this is the first, that the planning commission has seen of it, does the clock start now or has the clock already started? Is the clock done or?
So pursuant to the ordinance as currently drafted, there is a 15-day appeal period.
By the time the determination is made?
And the determination was made when?
On July 2nd.
So we're at 13 days right now or something?
And if I may ask a point of clarification for our city attorney, there is a different section within the zoning ordinance that deals with appeals and it does stipulate a 10-day appeal period for just any decisions rendered by the director or city planner. Would that section of the zoning code supersede these provisions within the interpretation section?
Yeah, it actually would be the 10-day, the 10-day period because a 15-day period is, is applicable if there's a failure to render a decision. So it actually is a shorter period, which is 10 days and not 15 days. So thank you, Stephanie.
So even though the planning commission has been notified about this, the clock has expired on us?
If it's a 10-day period.
By the time we got notification, it had expired. Here's kind of my concern, Al, in a way. This was first, the request for this interpretation where this issue was initiated by a subset of the planning commission at a design review subcommittee meeting, which I think was on early part of June. 12th of June, as a matter of fact, 12 June, D R S E minutes, I guess is where it was, where it was.
Yeah, June 12.
So a duly constituted, appointed subset of the planning commission formally asked that this be brought in, into the planning commission for an interpretation on the 12th of June. And then on the 2nd of July, the city planner made a unilateral decision to make an interpretation in spite of this planning commission subset. in spite of this planning commission subset of the planning commission request to do that. That's a part of the process I find very disturbing, and the fact that you and the, and the subset formally asked that this be brought forward to us for a discussion. And the fact, now 10, 13, 14 days ago, the city planner went forward and made this determination. And that's a process thing that I find very disturbing, and I find it not acceptable. And if I was to comment here, recently, we've had two incidences, one on a leaf blowing ordinance where we had continued some work and asked staff to bring it back, and the next thing you know, a complete ordinance now is being placed on the council agenda, bypassing this commission. So we've had two instances here of process that where the commission had been bypassed, different subject, it's the concept I find unacceptable. And that's where I'm really disturbed about, because I look at some of the issues here as set forth in the Commissioner Tally email, where you could make many conclusions that these were major considerations, at least in his mind. And so, when in doubt, error in the side of conservatism, when in doubt, bring it to a public forum. And I think, to me, this is two recent instances that I've never, I've been on this commission nine years, I've never seen before in the last couple of months of a, a sense of leaning forward in the saddle here, that I think goes beyond the boundaries. And then you take a look at this location, and there might be some reason, we don't want to get into project specific, although it's been down there for quite a while, but it's on Del Mar, and some of us that went through the 40 meetings of the general plan, nothing filled this room quicker or faster than when we had discussions on two versus three stories of Del Mar, design guidelines. El Camino Real in Del Mar is kind of the center of the earth of this town, it's a very sensitive area. And the city planner, I know he's new, every, and every city associate planner better understand that area is very sensitive. And nothing can bring out a lot of people quicker than somebody starting to trigger or tweak that area down there, and all those area zones. I just pass that on to you for future reference, and pass it on to the staff, of some of the experiences we had in this room over a three or four-year period for that general plan. And so, the location is sensitive, and the process here I'm seeing is disturbing.
So, I'm sorry, just let me go back to you, because I want to make an addendum to that. The, you were here, and we started to do some of the zoning ordinance changes from the general plan, of course. And to streamline the process, we used to have all minor CUPs and minor CHPs come through planning, and we, at one point said, we don't need to see all these, a lot of them are just, someone wants to paint their historic house, and staff can certainly handle that. And those were, the design was, the planner has, the chief planner has the discretion for these minor permits, to go and just do it at the zoning administration, it saves money, it saves time for the applicant, great. But the understanding and the practice has always been, since then, anything that might be, have an issue, as you were saying, something on Del Mar, you know, something having to do with sort of a precious historic property in town, things like that, were, were always kicked to the planning commission. You know, anything, anything that could potentially be controversial, always would just go to the planning commission. It helps, it preserves staffs, too, staff sanity. But that wasn't done here with the permits, it wasn't done with the interpretation, and, you know, right along the same lines of, of Don for that reason, there just seems to be kind of a hiccup in the process here. So, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
One question for Stephanie. The public has a 10-day right to appeal the minor interpretation, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
How does the public get notified of the minor interpretation to, to know that they should go appeal it?
You know, unfortunately, when it comes to any staff-level decisions, there unfortunately is not really a great system to let members of the public be aware of all of these decisions. Because under that section of our appeals chapter of the code, it essentially allows for any sort of administrative-level decision to be appealable. So that could include something as simple as like an STLU permit, for example. That's, you know, one common example. Or like staff waivers that are approved on a, on an administrative level. Those are all different types of applications that are appealable, but there isn't really a process set up in place right now to make all of those decisions available on the public. So a lot of it does require a certain degree of proactiveness on any members of the public that may, you know, have an interest in that project, a little proactive, activeness on staff's part, so that if we are aware of, again, any members of the public that have an interest in that project, proactively reaching out and providing, you know, a copy of that staff-level approval. But the short answer is, unfortunately, there's not really, it's not a standard practice to make all of those staff-level decisions published on the, on the city's website.
So in effect, there's no process of, of letting the commission or any of the public know of this, unless they actively call the planning department and say, what's going on with this project?
Unfortunately, that's the case.
Okay. So the 10 days really doesn't mean anything?
That's what I would, I would assume, and I think you're right. If there's no formal notification, then 10 days from then is not enforceable, I would think.
You wouldn't even know the date that the decision was made, much less what the decision was?
I'll defer to the system.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great point, from a practical perspective. The, the 10 days is enforceable, even if the public isn't, isn't given notice. This is, this is the standard appeals provision in almost every Muni code throughout California. One of the difficulties is that unless there's an interested party who's really tracking something, it's, it's very, very difficult to give them notice, even of planning commission level decisions. But it is, you know, it's an issue certainly to be discussed, but the, the ordinance as drafted with that 10-day limitation is enforceable. How to make it practically more effective, I think, is the question that's before the planning commission.
Don, do you have something more?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sam?
Yeah, a question for Mal regarding the review ability to continue from Chris's question. I think we were told that some of the decisions made by zoning administrator cannot be called up by planning commission, and if one would appeal, they would have to appeal to the city council, right?
But this isn't a zoning administrator decision.
That's fine, so.
Zoning administration has to go to the city council.
Yeah, so this is the decision of the planner, I believe, right? And so under, and I'm just reading this in real time, so, under section 17.12.140, sub A1A, decisions of the city planner, any person may appeal a decision of the director or city planner to the planning commission. The commission's decision may be appealed, the council's decision shall be final. So the first stop would be here at the commission, and any person, including the commissioner, could appeal or call up a decision of the planner to the planning commission. So in this instance, this decision would be appealable to the planning commission.
Okay, okay.
Now, your decision then would be appealable to the council. The council is the final decision-making body at that point.
But, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Another question is, are we, is this being considered appealed now?
No, this is simply a discussion about the process for interpretations, a general discussion. We are not appealing or calling up the actual interpretation or the interpretations that are in the staff report. Those are being used as examples to guide the planning commission's discussion about how to handle interpretations in the future, or potentially how to change the ordinance that governs interpretations. That's all within the planning commission's discretion.
We're not talking about a specific case, or are we going to talk about the interpretation tonight?
We can certainly discuss the interpretation. That's, that's already happening, right? There's, there's no question. But I think that is, that is being used as a platform to discuss interpretations generally, and how to potentially improve the process going forward.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm, what occurs to me now is, is options. What are, you know, kind of what are the options that are, that are before us, and of those options, do we want to exercise any? It, just to clarify, it sounds to me like even though we are able to appeal, the planning commission can appeal something like this, the clock has already expired on us before we were notified. Is that, is it?
Based on what I'm hearing with the timeframes, we're past the 10 days. I'm, I'm not that familiar with the facts of this, but that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Well, that's by text, but you certainly can make an argument saying, the clock should have started when people are notified, or they should have been, should have known.
Assuming the planning commission decided they wanted to appeal it, and we said, okay, you know, we're appealing it, we want it on our next, as an agenda on our next meeting, would that get us into any trouble with this, you know, with this date? I mean?
Well, as I understand the facts, and I'm going to need Stephanie to correct me where I'm wrong, because I'm, I'm not as familiar with, with this. First of all, the decision was made by the city planner on what date?
July 2nd.
July 2nd.
July 2nd.
Okay, so, so under 17.12.140, the, the clock begins on the date of the decision, not date of notification, the date of the decision, right? So that, that would then run the time on the 12th. I understand that the, the.
Is that ten working days or just 10 days?
It's 10 consecutive days.
Okay.
Consecutive calendar days. I believe the hearing on this item is tomorrow. Is that, is that correct? On the underlying item?
Correct, yes.
So, so if the interpretation were, were able to be challenged by the commission in two weeks, it would be too late to make any, you know, actual impact on this item, which is heard tomorrow. So I don't, I don't see how that could happen in terms of the timeframes, beginning in July 2nd, July 12th, with the hearing occurring tomorrow.
I'm, I'm on a determination here. First of all, it's, the interpretation has the potential for public impact or concern. So that's a, that's a potential, makes it a pretty high chinning bar.
This, this language is, is incredibly broad. I, I don't know how, how to make it more objective, that would be a very difficult task. It certainly can be done. But that could be seen as a very high bar, as a very low bar, depending on, on who's, who's viewing the application, but certainly.
I'd like, I'd like to read this into the record. These are the minutes of the design review subcommittee of June 12th, 2019. Is the Commissioner Rulin in charge?
Can you just wait for a minute, and I'm just going to put that in my hand then? Is it part of 9A? Is it?
It's part of the attachment four of the current staff report by, okay? And it states.
And I just, I'm sorry, Don, I'd love to have you read this in the record, but is that a permissible under our, the way we take minutes over the last, over recent years?
You can do that.
We can?
I can read anything into the record.
Oh, okay, great. I thought that that was something.
Discussing zoning definitions and regulations related to restaurant uses and bar uses, express concern over classifying the proposed use as a restaurant, given the lack of food service. Bullet two, these, that's bullet one. Bullet two, discussed the intent of the zoning ordinance related to outdoor dining areas, recommended the zoning administrator refer this project to the planning commission and recommended the city planner consider this a major interpretation, subject to planning commission review, was the minutes of the design review subcommittee of 12 June. So a subbody of the planning commission and the city's planning committee recommended that on that date. And the staff presented, including yours truly, present here, and Ms. Crockett. And so that was the, that was the action of the design review subcommittee on that date that formed the plan, the planning department of their concern. And so, why wasn't that acted upon, why was that, why was that unilaterally ignored, is a process concern, I think, of, of great issue. When standing members of this, of this planning commission made those statements on that date with those words attached, this should be considered a major interpretation. So I don't know physically actually made those words, but it's in the minutes, those are the bullets that are in this report, and that's a serious, I think, process, process violation.
Stephanie, the city planner made.
That's notification to the community development director and the city planner that this should come to the planning commission on 12 June, and that was disregarded. And I find that very disturbing. And I'm looking right at the city attorney on this issue. And so I'm not, you know, this is, I think, very serious, it's happening here, or violation, or I'm struggling for words, but the process was not followed properly. And I think there's legal, there's legal concern in that. I think the city staff and the planner that made the determination was told by a subset of this commission 20-some days in advance of this, exactly in the wordings and interpretation was made, at a formalized, agendaized meeting of a subset of this commission. I think that's serious. Tell me it's not.
So all that I can speak to is, is the legal requirements. Certainly, if the planning commission or a subset of the planning commission gives, gives that input, that, I would think would be taken seriously. The way the ordinance reads, and this is not opining at all on, on your statements about the seriousness of the opinions offered by the planning commission members, the way that the ordinance reads, the city planner has given absolute discretion. And that's, that's, I think, the disconnect that's being discussed right now, is that the planning commission, or the DRSC, as the case may be, may give input, and that input may be that, that this item is X. If the city planner feels that the item is Y, under the ordinance as drafted, the planner has that discretion to say that it's Y, in spite of the input given by the commission. Now, I'm not opining as to the practical effects of that, I'm just saying legally, the planner has that discretion. If the commission wants to tweak that, and so DRSC input is, is taken into consideration, then, then that is certainly something to be discussed. But, but legally, there's no, there's no issue with the interpretation that, that was made. Practically, it may be a completely different story. Does, does that make sense?
Uh, question for staff, because you were present at that meeting, according to the minutes.
That's correct, yes.
Was this inter, this issue brought forward to the city planner and the community development director for further discussion?
That is correct. The draft minutes were forwarded to both the city planner and community development director. So it was taken into consideration. Katie was involved in several of those discussions as well, so, sorry to add you to the conversation, but I don't want to speak, I'd be remiss to speak on behalf of the city planner and community development director.
I just want to know whether these items were brought forward and discussed?
That's correct. They were discussed, and these minutes were forwarded to both of those individuals.
And the minutes that were discussed, as far as the city, the design review subcommittee's recommendation?
That's my understanding correct. And feel free to add anything else, Katie.
Okay.
Thanks. It sounds like you want my confirmation on that.
I'll check your input.
So, the city planner was aware of the DRSC's recommendation?
Okay.
When, when the city planner made the interpretation?
Thank you. So, Michael, you have a chance, Dan, yeah?
Yeah, I just, I see the disconnect here, and I see the problem. At this point, we cannot go back and fix that one, but we can fix the future ones. I say we start talking about making some changes, notification on these, we can do it. Our emails are going to light up, that's really the only way to know about these projects, you know, when the determination is made, so that we can actually review them, act accordingly. If we feel need to pull something up, then we will. The city website being adjusted, so all those reflect as well with a link. That's really all we have, and just, maybe we start talking about making that happen.
Well, Stephanie, how often is there a minor interpretation made by the city planner?
Not frequently. I mean, I can't even recall, though. I mean, I, I can't even recall the last minor interpretation that was made, you know, in recent months or even years. And one thing I do want to clarify is that the city planner did forward a copy of this interpretation to the Planning Commission Chair, Commissioner Crandall. And he did also forward it to one member of the public that expressed interest and expressed concern as well, Michael Cowb. So they both received a copy of this minor interpretation as soon as the decision was rendered.
When, when did that happen?
July 2nd.
So on the same day?
Correct, yeah.
But that decision was, but the decision was not made in front of the public?
No, no. It was a staff-level decision. But as soon as that decision was finalized, copies of it were provided to the Planning Commission Chair and to one member of the public that expressed interest.
Okay. Did you want?
All right, that's all, that's, that's my thought. I think we should really consider talking about that tonight.
Okay. Chris, did you have more?
No.
Okay. Zen, did you have something else?
Well, I can talk about the, the merit of that interpretation itself, but that's not a main issue. I think we all, we all agree that, I'm not sure, but I believe we all agree that this interpretation is incorrect. But we're talking about process here, in response to Michael's comments, make this happen. That has to be done at the city council level to change the code ordinance and get some clarification.
Well, that's true, but we've done it in the past.
Yeah, actually-
It has to start somewhere.
The zoning ordinance changes would come through planning.
Well, we're initiating some change, and we don't get to initiate-
We can recommend to them that they initiate something. I don't know if, can we initiate a zoning ordinance change, or just city council?
The, the process would be that the commission would recommend the council look at initiating a zoning amendment. So it goes commission, council, commission. But that's, but that's the process. I would also note, you know, in terms of process, as the commission is discussing this, Commissioner Blackwell, I think, said our emails are going to light up. Interpretations are fairly infrequent, every, every few months, maybe. So as you, as you talk about process, just take that into consideration.
That's not bad.
Yeah, and I've been, I've been here, I've been on and off the commission for seven or eight years, and this is the second interpretation that I see.
Well, we had an interpretation discussion about a building height. It was not, never formalized. There was a, a study session, and there was no written document for that interpretation.
So there wasn't a, like, an official interpretation made, like, with the other ones? So, well, let me, let me ask, in terms of, you know, moving forward here, we could really recommend to city council anything, correct? We could recommend that they, that they investigate, or that they negate the interpretation, or change the interpretation, or, or send the interpretation down to us, or something like that, correct?
Here, are we talking about the, the instant interpretation that's giving rise to the-
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that.
The MCUP tomorrow. I think in terms of process, that MCUP hearing is tomorrow.
Right.
So, so changing that interpretation in a way that would impact whatever happens with zoning administration, that's, that's going to be difficult, right? The interpretation would have to apply moving forward, not, not post facto.
So the, the, the decisions of the ZA are-
Those are appealable, absolutely.
So-
The administrators are appealable?
Pardon me?
Zoning administrators are appealable.
Right. So, you know, I'm, I'm just sort of brainstorming here. I'm not, I'm not putting a stake in the ground. But would, you know, one possible thing we could do is recommend, hey, you, you know, these minor permits and the interpretation should probably go back to the Planning Commission, or that they should review them in some way in light of the interpretation, something like that.
Yeah, I had the same thing. What is the best process? You've seen, you've been, you've been at-
We're getting on the spotlight, don't you?
Yeah. You've been at other cities, or at least you've seen it. And what is, what is the best oversight for a minor interpretation permit?
I, I don't want to punt the question. It's a very good question. It's an impossible question to answer, because every city is different. I represent cities where the interpretation process is at staff level, it's never appealed, the commission, the council simply take what the planner does. And I've been at cities where interpretations are done by the Planning Commission. I mean, that's, that's really the spectrum. And, and there's, and there's, there's everything in between. I mean, there are, there's, there are possibilities where, where the, the planner can make an interpretation, and that is then forwarded to the commission on consent calendar, it can be pulled or not pulled. I mean, there are, there are all kinds of options here, but the range of possibilities, right, goes from the planner having absolute discretion, it's not questioned, to interpretations being done by the Planning Commission, and everything in between. And what's best really is based on what works for a given city. I'll tell you, San Clemente tends to be more, more proactive, and certainly more involved with the details of planning, right? And so would, would the, the far end of the spectrum approach be the best here, which is the planner has absolute authority, that's not questioned? Well, we've heard tonight that, that, that wouldn't be the proper approach. But is the approach where the commission has, has absolute say, and the planner isn't involved the right approach? Well, that's up to you, because that just involves more work for you as, as the commission.
So what would you, what would you recommend to give this 10-day notice teeth? Meaning that right now, nobody's getting notice?
Well, probably not it.
Well, I guess one question for Stephanie is, is, is what is, what happens when, say, a CUP is approved at Planning Commission level? How is that, how is notice of that given to those who may appeal that or call that up in the city? Is there anything special beyond just the approval?
Typically, no. Typically, the standard practice is that we provide copies of that decision to the applicant and any interested members of the public.
Okay. So if, if the concern is that the commission isn't, isn't notified of the interpretations, and the interpretation really affects what you do, right? Your, your jurisdiction is over the zoning ordinance, and part of it is how it's interpreted. Maybe the easiest first step is to ensure that upon an interpretation being made, or even being considered, notice is given to every individual Planning Commissioner. Now, notice couldn't be given to you as a, as a body, because as a body, you cannot, or at least a quorum, cannot discuss outside of an agendized meeting, anything within your jurisdiction. But individual councilmembers could be given that notice, allowing you to call that up. It sounds like that was done here, but only with one individual member of the commission, and that was Chair Crandall. So that's certainly one step that could be taken. Additionally, these, these, these issues could be discussed at DRSC, which happened here, and changes can be made to the ordinance where, where, where DRSC input is, is legally required to be taken into consideration here, there's no requirement that that be considered. It's, you know, it's certainly persuasive evidence, but it's not mandatory to be taken into consideration. That's certainly one change that could also be considered if the ordinance were to be changed.
I think what we can do is, we can talk about, well, there are two issues here, right? First is the determination of a major or minor interpretation. And the second is the, the specifics of that bar being considered a restaurant. We can talk about that and have our opinion, have the staff to relate to the zoning administrator for her, or who, who is the zoning administrator?
Cecilia or she?
It's, yes, that's correct. It's commonly the Community Development Director.
When she considered this item tomorrow. And at the same time, her decision is appealable to the city council, if someone is interested in doing that.
Well, I would certainly think that a recommendation like the minutes of the Design Review Subcommittee that I wrote into the record is something in the future that the city planner and the Community Development Director take aboard very, much more seriously than they did in this instance. Because I think whether you or Jim Barcandl or Chris, who are the three who were there at this meeting, somebody certainly made all the right legal words into those minutes. What this, three of you considered it a major consideration, which triggers, okay, goes to the Planning Commission, and requested it to go to the Planning Commission. And so even though the, the ordinance gives great discretion, some people should have used greater discretion, and that was not used. And a lot of this is based on trust and confidence. And we in San Clemente are very active when you get down into the older, more historic areas. I mean, I've, we've sat here in this commission eight years ago, and we, we've proved the final build-out of, of Talega. I mean, they came back in, and we want to build 35 homes, and we want to pick up where we, where the lots were sat empty for eight years, and one of them, the community got organized, and we said, okay with that. And the rest of them, there was nobody here. But you want to touch a tree on Del Mar, and you're going to get 50 people in here. And that's just San Clemente. And the new city planner, and you, and some of the other new people have got to realize that it's very sensitive down in the historic areas. And, and you look at that general plan, where those opportunity zones were up and down Elcom Anywhereall and all that stuff, and Del Mar and T-Zone, and every, every word in that general plan was written in blood. And there was 40 meetings of it, and a couple of us went through it all, and it's just, that's, that's, that's the message. That you start dealing down there, like this particular thing going tomorrow, which is on Del Mar, in an historic building, you better tread lightly in error to the high side. It's just, that's the message. It's just, it's, if it's Talega, it's kind of okay. If it's pierable, watch it. So, I just, that's the message. I mean, that's the, that's the way, we learned it the hard way, too. And it's just a message.
So let me, let Michael interject, and then I've got maybe a possible couple of recommendations I'll toss out.
Just have a quick question for Mel on, kind of these interpretations versus precedents, and how, how the city would, would use that? I mean, how, so if, if an interpretation is made for a particular use, and the same use comes similar, comes in somewhere else in town, and a different interpretation is made, what, what right does the applicant have in terms of, you know, applying precedent on that?
The question is not what is the practice of the city, but what happens hypothetically if we have Use A and Use A1, and they are the same use, they're six months separated, and A receives interpretation X, A1 receives interpretation Y? What recourse does A1 have if they want X, but they got Y? That's the question. So there's nothing, there's nothing in the interpretation ordinance that creates any kind of precedential effect. My understanding is that when interpretations are made, there's essentially a queue that's created, and any interpretation eventually goes before the Planning Commission and Council for potential inclusion in the zoning ordinance. Is that, is that correct, Stephanie? I could be wrong on that.
That's not always the case. In some cases, there could be a recommendation as part of the interpretation to include it as a future code update. But that's not necessarily the case. Typically, with interpretations, it's saved within staff folders so that we can use it as a reference for the future.
Okay. So that's, that's not relevant to your question. So what, what exposure is there is your question? An individual or entity could bring an equal protection challenge if they feel like there was disparate treatment between them and a prior, a prior applicant. Now, there are, there are, there are criteria that have to be satisfied to bring that kind of a challenge. It's not easy to bring that, but that would be the basis for the exposure.
Thank you. And wouldn't we want to guard against that to the greatest extent we can?
I don't know about that, but we, this body is not, this interpretation is not binding to, to us. We can exercise our own discretion to review this project in front of us. Zoning administrator may accept the city planner's interpretation on this. We don't have to. You know, we can exercise our own discretion.
I, you know, this is, this is a tough one. It's kind of, it's a bit of new territory, I think, for, for all of us, certainly for me, in terms of, you know, what's the appropriate way to go in here. So let me, let me put out a couple of ideas, see how our attorney and, and staff and commissioners think of it. We've got, you know, how do we want to go forward? And we've got, what's the current application? We've got the issues that, that Mel raised in terms of equal protection. We've got, you know, how is this going to affect downtown, and precedents that might get set. But it's sort of out of our, it seems to have gone out of our, our direct purview, at least for now, unless city council, I guess, wants to make it our purview. So one thing that we might want to think of doing is to make a recommendation to city council, that they pull the agenda item, the ZA agenda item with those permits, and consider them directly in light of the fact that Planning Commission is very concerned that this is actually a major interpretation, that a significant, that could have significant public impact. Leave it to that, so they've got a message for there, they can do what they wish with it, they could, I suppose they could even send it back to us. I, I think they have that ability, but, or they can make a decision on their own, that sort of thing. So that may be the way, what we can do. I don't know what else we can do, maybe there is that I haven't thought of, but that seems to be the most that we could do in terms of trying to protect the city, and, you know, in terms of this particular issue. After that, it's a question of, do we need to look at our interpretation process? And I don't want to go and get a, burn our saddle over something that we look at once every five years, or is affected once every five years, but maybe there's some kind of discussion or something that we need to have. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what to do. We could go say, let's, let's have a zoning ordinance talk about it, but do we really want to do that? Do we want to, do we want to go there with this? So let me ask first, what, how do people feel about that first recommendation? That we, that we send that recommendation to city council?
I agree with you.
I, I think we need to elaborate the, the reason behind it, because some city council member may ask, what's the problem with a bar being categorized as a restaurant? So we need a little discussion here to, to offer the rationale.
I, I think, to me, anyway, one of the big rationales is without, again, we don't have in front of us, say, a staff report on, you know, a study on, to make a major interpretation on something. We don't have that information, that research from staff in front of us. So we don't want to make that interpretation here. But we can look and say, look, there was this interpretation done earlier, seven years ago. When I saw it was seven years ago, I couldn't believe it. It was like, how long ago? Because I, you and I were there at the time, where we were looking at a taproom, exactly this situation, and it was considered a major interpretation, and we said, this is a bar and not a restaurant. And you could even argue that that's the interpretation. We were done, we should have been done at that point. What the minor interpretation is saying, this is my understanding of it is, is, well, if you remove this small ability to do some brewing there on site, it's no longer a bar, it's a restaurant. And I do not see the logic in that. So we could say to city council, look, we have this previous, previous interpretation Planning Commission made. The difference is not significant, so it should, they should have used that same interpretation or use, do another major interpretation. And for that reason, we feel that the applications based on that interpretation should be pulled by you and examined in light of that.
If I can chime in?
Please, yeah.
I think it would be wise to really leave it at that, because it articulates well, I, I think, from what I'm seeing, the, the Planning Commission's concern with the various interpretations, and the consistency or lack thereof between those interpretations. And what you're asking is for the council to independently review it and determine whether it, the, the, the use that's being discussed is appropriate or not, without prejudging the use. And that's a step that we don't want to take, is to prejudge a use that hasn't even been approved yet, right? So if, if the request is simply for the council to call that up, to review it independently, regardless of what happens, because of discomfort with, with kind of the interpretation that's been made, I think that's, that's fine. I don't want us to go beyond that in our discussion, like we talked about now a half an hour ago, because this could come back to the Planning Commission.
I have a few of the- I have a few observations I'd like to offer. I'll make it quick. First, on the, on the major public concern, alcoholic consumption is different from non-alcoholic beverage. And that's the reason we have alcoholic beverage control board by the state. So, they're quite different from restaurants. Secondly, is we, we in fact have a definition in our municipal code on bar. It's not in zoning code, but it's in health and, it's in chapter eight, eight point six six, point two zero. I'll read it to you. That is a specific chapter, something about, some, about a later, later receptacles. It reads, bar means a establishment located within the city's T-zone, which is devoted to the serving of alcoholic beverage for consumption by patrons on the premises, deriving at least a portion of its gross revenue from the sale of alcohol and in which the serving of the food is only incidental to the consumption of such beverages. For the purpose of this chapter, a bar includes those facilities located within hotels, motels, or other similar transient occupancy establishments. So, there is a definition with a very minor tweak. For example, you just delete that located within city zone. It can be a general definition of bar. Thirdly, the general rule of legal reconstruction, specific requirements override general ones. So, in our zoning code regarding parking requirements, there is a separate item for bars and cocktail lounges from restaurants. Although one may argue that bars can be considered a restaurant because they're underneath the restaurant's bigger category, but because of that specific requirements, and that specific requirement will trump the general requirements for restaurants.
Well, let me then, in light of Mel's comment, and I saw some people nodding their heads as I was making my recommendation, maybe start and possibly end with, let me try to craft something. I'll make a motion, since I brought this forward. I'll make a motion and say something, try to craft it, and see if that, that fits. I, I, I think discretion is a better part of valor, so I don't want to, you know, go shooting both barrels at city council or anything like that. But I want to say something that's going to bring it to their attention and hopefully have them, you know, open it up and take a good look at this, so. So, I will move that we recommend to city council that they review the zoning administration minutes, agenda items pertaining to the MCUP and MCHP for, can I say the name? For Artifacts Brewery, to consider its public impact in the light of the minor interpretation that was done, as compared to the major interpretation 12 dash 434. That was from January 9th, 2013.
Do we have it all from a legal standpoint there?
How does, is that, that sounds all right? Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Does, I, I would like to ask staff if they have any comments or insights on it. You can, you can certainly stay out of that if you want. I understand that. But if you have any insights, I'm, I'm happy to hear.
No insights or nothing to add, but I did have a question for clarification from the city attorney. You did mention earlier that within the appeal provisions of the zoning ordinance, that the planning commissioners have the ability to call up items for review for any decisions made by the city planner or the director of community development. I wanted just to get some clarification on that, because I know that there was a question posed by Commissioner Tally about being able to call up this items, item for review. And the city planner did refer to him to file a more formal appeal and to, that there was a specific procedure for being able to do that. And so, really, I'm speaking more broadly, so for the future, in terms of processing. I do want to receive some clarification as far as if the planning commission were to request any items to be called up for review, whether or not it be a minor interpretation, or say, a staff waiver, just any sort of staff level decision. Does the planning commission have that ability to just call it up for review, or would they have to go through that formal appeals process?
I think the best way to tackle that would be for me to take a deep dive into the actual ordinance, because it is a fairly complicated ordinance, to make sure that I get that straight. I don't believe there's a call-up procedure in the ordinance for the commission like there's for the council. I think it's simply an appeal procedure, the same as, as is applicable to the applicant or to any, any individual. But I'll confirm that and let the commission know via memo.
I think the city planner told the, the planning commissioner that he could file the appeal, but it was like a $1,200 appeal process fee that went with it also.
That's to appeal as an individual citizen, because the commission doesn't have a meeting until two weeks later. A lot of time, it would be too late.
All right. So, I made a motion. Chris has seconded it. Is there any more discussion on that particular motion? Doesn't mean we don't have other things we could discuss, but anything? All right, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Is there any other discussion? I'm sorry?
I'd like to read it back to you.
Sure. Great.
You're going to move to recommend to city council that they resume the zoning administration minutes pertaining to MCUP and whatever it was, for Artifacts Brewery, to consider its public impact in light of the minor interpretation that was done in comparison to major interpretation XXX number that was done on whatever date, 2013.
Does that sound all right? Okay. I hope that's, I hope that's clear to them, so.
And one other thing is now about the actual interpretation and the process. Notice and the ability to call it up for, to the planning commission, some sort of a recommendation to council.
Well, yeah, that, that is like, the other issue is how, how we want to do with that. And my, you know, I'm concerned about it, but I, but it's also, this happens rarely, right? So, how, how heavy of a process do we want to put on to this? I don't want to see this.
It would be a two-step process, right? Just a notice to the planning commission, instead of just one, every planning commissioner. And two, the ability to call up the interpretation to be discussed in, at the planning commission.
Well, we just had to have some motion about a specific case. What we can do is we can, we can recommend the staff will bring back to us agenda items. The planning commission created interpretation on this thing. It's our interpretation.
I think we still need to recommend to city council that, that some amendment be made.
Right, right.
That gives us that authority.
Yeah, we, we really do not have any call-up ability from the planning commission in the city. And we went through this when we, with Jim Holloway, which preceded, he preceded Cecilia. When we tried to winnie down a huge amount of reviews, we did, there was, we reviewed like 800 various things that the city reviewed from the city manager level all the way down to try to streamline things. And we said, sure, push a lot of things down, but maybe we put a trigger in there that the planning commission have a call-up capability. And the community development directly vehemently opposed that, because once you track something like on a call-up, then a lot of your templates that we drive to, then the wheels fell off. We got, everything got sidelined, how many weeks to a zoning administrator, or how many weeks it takes.
I think it would always add two weeks to every single application, which is already 18 weeks long.
And so, there was a huge debate about having a call-up capability for the planning commission, which we have none. The council has it all. And so, to go there for a call-up capability, I guess, means you have to go there carefully is the point I'm trying to bring up. We had a big discussion on it, and most everybody in the room here isn't, wasn't there for that.
So, this would be for minor interpretations, and those apparently happen very rarely?
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, in all my time on planning, we've done one major interpretation. I don't know how many minors.
I remember there was a guest house, or second dwelling unit. When, when it was considered a guest house, that was an interpretation.
Oh, was it? So, maybe there's.
In a memo.
But, well, maybe just to keep things as focused as we can, I suppose we could recommend to council that they look at, maybe even just that clause, that, that, that discretion, and look to reword that or something.
Well, we'd have to propose something.
Well, we'd, we'd propose it as a result of having staff come to us with something, and city council, I think, would have to give that direction.
Just a procedural note. So, I mean, there are, there are all kinds of ways to skin this cat, but again, going back to kind of the ping pong, right? So, all the commission would need to do is, is, is recommend that the council deputize the commission to take a look at this, right? Then this discussion about that language, or other parts of this section, would be discussed by the commission, with an ordinance recommended to the council for approval. So, the heavy lifting would be done at the commission level. You would just recommend that the council allow you to do that heavy lifting.
I like that.
So, so to examine the part of the ordinance that deals with minor and major interpretations?
Or, or the entire ordinance? It's up to the commission.
It's tough, especially when the planning commission or commissioner disagree with the staff. Just remember what happened on the building height. The city council directed, directed staff to bring it to the planning commission as agenda item for new, for interpretation. We, I waited for about a year and a half and got a study session, and that's over. And we don't have any formal interpretation on that item. So, unless the commission or some commissioner wants to take up the task to write a new interpretation, the staff is going to write something different, different from what you think.
Yes, but that's where it should start. We can obviously, you know, work on it here, but staff are the professionals, and they should be crafting the ordinance first based on our input. It might start with a study session, or we have a conversation. Staff goes off and takes our input and crafts an initial ordinance, and we review it, et cetera, et cetera. But.
Yeah, by the time you ask them to revise it according to your comment, you'd rather just write it yourself. Just like the Supreme Court judge would write a majority opinion type of thing.
Well, then it'll be a good meeting.
That's.
But we should do something. And I like.
Because I don't, I don't want.
So, you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah.
I don't want an applicant to come, come to us and say, hey, I have a bar, and I want to be exemplified from this parking requirement. Look at this guy, he got it, why can't, why can't I do it? We need to stop that.
Right. That's, that's what we were talking about earlier.
You know, maybe not for that particular case, but for the future ones.
So, I like what Mel said. I can't remember exactly the words.
Can you, can you repeat that? And then I'll just say.
I have no idea what I said.
Make a motion that.
I think, I think the idea, I think the idea was, was if the commission is interested in reviewing section 17.04.040 of the code, then the commission could make a recommendation to the council to allow the commission with staff to review this ordinance and recommend potential revisions to the council subsequently for approval. Recognizing that is entirely within the council's discretion to allow that to go forward. It's simply commission's recommendation that the council allow this review to go forward. They can approve that or deny that.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the language that legal has offered to council for consideration.
Mel, can you, can you tell me the code citation number again?
Seventeen point zero four point zero four zero.
Eileen, do you, can you do that? Or I think it might be better if you tried to phrase it in your words.
Okay, so, I will move that.
I think you're, you're mic'd up.
I'll move that the planning commission recommend to the council that the council allow, planning commission to review section 17.04.040 of the code to make a, an amendment to that code section.
To, well, to review it and possibly make recommendations on the change.
Make recommendations for an amendment.
Okay. Is that good? Eileen, did you, were you able to capture that?
Recommend to city council that the city council allow the planning commission to review section 17.04.040 of the code to review and then possibly make a recommendation for amendment.
Okay.
Worth. Possibly.
Okay. Motion by Michael, second by Dawn. Any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, any more discussion on this issue? If not, we will move on to old business, of which we have none, reports of commissioners and staff. Any, anyone have any reports they would like to make?
I do. I was, I was out for the second meeting in June, so have lots to report on coastal advisory committee. On our, in our meeting, June meeting, coastal advisory committee has a monthly meeting. So, in June meeting on, June 11th, the committee worked on, completed a work plan and submitted to the city council as a, as a result. And then also, after learning staff recommendation to reduce coastal advisory committee to be an ad hoc committee, the committee unanimously opposed it, and authorized chairwoman Susan Ambrosi to meet with council members on this issue. Subsequently, Susan John McGregor met with the city council member, and also the vice chair, Jureen Campapiano, wrote some email for the input. Then, on the city council meeting on June 18th, Susan went there to make her plea. City council supported it. As a result, the coastal advisory committee was down to five members to, to meet bi-monthly up to two hours, with exception to extend the meeting and the call, call for special meeting. And also, there's no, there's no more representative from Beach Parker and Recreation Committee to the coastal advisory committee. We still have ours, which we just selected.
So, you're no longer ad hoc, you're kind of back to meeting every other month?
Every other month, yeah. Then they can call special meeting if something comes up. In July meeting, which is, was the last week, last Thursday, we re-elected Susan Ambrosi as the chair and Jureen Campapiano as the vice chair. And then we reviewed the environmental sustainability grant program, recommended to the city council to award $7,000 for four applicants, including Concordia Elementary School, Ocean Institute Partnering with us, Palmas School, Watershed Task Force, and the St. Clemente lifeguard and the Junior Lifeguard Foundation. And after that, we talked about some water quality issues at Pierre and Poche Beach. Pierre is, as you know, ranked the number one recently, so we're famous and infamous at the post-time. We also advised the committee that, at the end, I advised the committee that planning commission would elect a representative to coastal advisory committee tonight. And so, that could be, would be my last meeting if I'm not sent back. And I appreciate.
What was the rationale for dropping Beach's partial recreation off the coastal advisory?
I'm sorry?
What was the rationale for dropping Beach's partial recreation off the coastal advisory committee?
They didn't have that one for a long time, and.
But they just weren't appointing somebody, or?
Beach Parker and Recreation just stopped a standing member to. Beach Park and Recreation just stopped sending member to coastal advisory committee. I heard different stories, but the official story is that everybody is too busy to come over. So city council just decided, let's not do that anymore. So for a long time, coastal advisory committee had six members.
Yeah, because five or six years I was on it, there was seven members, and they were all, they always were elected participants. But when the regional council set it up, it made sense to have somebody from Beach's Partial Recreation, since the lifeguards and all the activities on the beach are kind of, you know, have the deals.
You know, there was a little bit of overlapping issues there, because Beach Park and Recreation has a name "beach" inside, but in their master plan, they don't have a lot about a beach. So there was some discontinuity there. That's all.
All right. Does anyone have anything else? Well, I will just take a moment to say thank you to everyone for your confidence in me and putting me in the chair's chair. I hope you'll be patient with me and my inevitable mistakes that I will make and have already made.
You were patient with me, so we will be.
And I promise you, I'll do the best that I can in the job. And I appreciate it. So thank you.
Team member.
All right, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Okay. And then I move that we adjourn to the next adjourned regular meeting of the planning commission that will be held on August 7th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. In council chambers located at 100 Avenue to Presidio, San Clemente, California.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned.